So if you'd like to fill out a public comment card, please do so. And yeah, we'll get started. You ready? Ready to go?
Yep.
Todd, do we need city manager or attorney for any reason?
We can't make any decisions tonight while we're talking.
Got it, thank you. Okay, so we shouldn't expect her.
I don't know.
Okay.
It's just three.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023. It is 6 o'clock PM. We are at 100 Polk Avenue here in Cape Canaveral, Florida, at the City Hall Council Chambers for our City of Cape Canaveral City Council Budget Workshop. I call this meeting to order. Councilmember Kellum, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Kellum.
Here.
Mayor Morrison.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Raymond. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
We have three council members here, which I believe we have a quorum. Counsel, any reservations? If I'm not, I believe we can continue to talk, but unless this counsel wants to wait on the remaining, but I don't think we expect them.
No, we got confirmation that the other two will not be here tonight.
Okay, thank you. So Counsel, are we okay with proceeding? Okay, thank you. All right, so at this time, public participation. Thank you all for being here. And for those of you who are live streaming at home, I wanted to give this opportunity for anyone who'd like to speak. It's a workshop, so at any point, if you don't have any comments now, maybe towards the end, if you hear something and you want to chime in, we can do it at the end as well, if time permitting. So this time, I don't have any cards up here, and I might have made a mistake on the livestream. I don't think we have those capabilities now where people to participate.
No, it's not too late.
Got it, thank you very much.
And Mayor, I should clarify that Councilmember Davis did tell me that she had a scheduling conflict and regrets that she couldn't be here.
Thank you. So, yes, are there anyone who wants to speak? If so, please raise your hand. Sure, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting, which now we can roll into the discussion item, which is our budget workshop to discuss the proposed 2023-2024 Budget and Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Counsel, if you're okay, I think city manager and/or finance director and the team could maybe give us some highlights. I know that John, Finance Director, provided an attachment. I just want to make sure everyone got that. We discussed potentially going over that. But if, unless the council member has something to say upfront, I'll go ahead and pass it over to the city manager to see if there's anything that he feels we need to know about. We okay? Good, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is our third budget workshop this year, and the budget we put together this year is a proposed millage rate of 3.5716. And that, as we've discussed previously, is a culmination of all the things that we're bringing forward into this year, including the impacts of inflation, which I know everybody's feeling, and the city's certainly feeling it too, plus the projects that the city council wants to continue, and the new projects, which are very few, that came out of the strategic planning retreat. All those items are brought forward in here. I should also mention that we have had increases in our workers' compensation and our general liability, as well as everybody is. You know, homeowner's insurance is going up like crazy. It's a product of the times, I think largely, that we're at 3.5716 to get this minimum budget done with maintaining core services is a key component of this. But this council, I understand, wanted to meet and talk about, are there things that we can creatively look at to do anything to bring this millage rate down? Our job has been to propose a budget and a millage rate that gives the council everything that we said we wanted throughout the months of creating this. So we're open, we're here, ready to answer questions. John DeLeo is here, Jenny Coldiron is here, and they can answer any specific questions. And as you mentioned, Mayor, there is a sheet that was put in front of us here about the changes that we are aware of to date that John and Jenny are going to go over. Perhaps that's a good place for us to get started, just to make sure we understand what this sheet says. And then let's open the floor to any and all ideas and suggestions and see where we go.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, I just want to state at this point that, and Jenny will go ahead and explain the changes we have based on what happened on the August 15th meeting and what have you. And these changes will be incorporated for all of you by Tuesday of next week. So, you know, we get, we make sure we have the updated budget to counsel for the first hearing. So what that, what that means is, is since there'll be no firm changes tonight that's going to be voted on, the, once Jenny puts in these changes in front of you, that's, that's going to be reflected in your book, your budget book, that you'll be looking at on September 6th. Then when September 6th rolls around, if the decision is made by council, whatever form or fashion, that the millage changes, then that's when staff will have to go into action. And whatever those things you decided to change, based on whatever decision you make, we will update the budget. And then, of course, on September 20th, then you would basically enact and we execute, vote on the final budget. And if you'd like, if you have any question, Jenny could just give you a quick synopsis of what's going on with the changes.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, the first one was the EV charging stations. If you remember, it was decided not to have part of them in the CRA. So this is just transferring the revenue and the expenses that we had put in the CRA back to the general fund. So that affects the resiliency, their CIP would go up by $80,000. Our general fund revenue would be increased by $48,000. And then that would take contingency down $32,000 in the general fund. So the contingency, as it would stand, is 171,026. The second item was with the new short-term registration contract, or short-term rentals registration contract. The old contract, we didn't see expenses tied to that. Excuse me, the company, they got all the money, and then they gave us after their fees. This new company is set up a little bit differently, so we will have a revenue line item, but we also have an expense line item. The third item is kind of an in and an out. It's the vulnerability analysis grant. Again, we'll put revenue in for the grant and an expense out of resiliency. The last item, this was a miscommunication. When I asked Dave Dickey to help me out with the revenue, what we might be receiving in the following, in this next year, this amount that he had told me was amount, the 1.2 million that we had already, it had already been booked. So we're actually getting the money, it was just a miscommunication. So I want to take that, that, that's out of the impact fees, Department 107.
And Mayor, I just want to mention that the first two items, the EV charging stations and the new STR registration contract, those are actually positive revenue generators for us in that the EV charging stations, while there is, there is an initial cost to installing them, there's revenue, annual revenue, that will pay for them over the first two to three years, and then it's just net revenue from there. The STR registration contract, even though we're fronting $35,000, we're going to be actually making more money off of the STR registration contract than we were under the previous. These are just the journal entries, how we have to adjust them in the budget. And of course, the vulnerability analysis grant, that's, that's a net zero. It's money in, money out each year for three years of $75,000. That's for the update to the vulnerability analysis. City council approved that at the last council meeting with DEP, they said we're out of compliance, along with so many other cities, out of compliance with your vulnerability analysis. You need to update it if you want any more FDP grants. Well, how are we going to pay for that? Well, they said, well, we're going to pay for it. We're giving you a grant for 100%. Well, how do you say no to that?
And then I just had one more item, and the last budget workshop, I misspoke. We were talking about the, the money that was left on the loan for the Civic Hub, and I kept saying it was 250,000. I forgot, at the very end of last year, we paid for the demo and the asbestos removal around $50,000. So the balance in that loan is $206,000. We have $150,000 budgeted for this next budget year. So then if we use all that next budget year, we would have 50,000 left. So I apologize, I misspoke last meeting. That's all I have.
And I have one other item, and I, it's point order. I'm, I'm not sure we even have to do this, but I'm going to ask counsel. So in the CRA, when you move the, you know, you voted on and moved the money from EV chargers to the general fund, Todd, I don't know if it's required, but if this council just did a consensus that it's, it's understood it's going to be in the budget that you're going to approve, that the EV charging stations will be charged in the general fund. I didn't know if counsel needed to do just a consensus here now to say, yeah, we acknowledge, of course, we took it out of the CRA and we're putting it in the general fund.
I believe we've got that scheduled for the next meeting, the September meeting, for council final action on that.
The, the thing on the final action, though, on September 20th, is just for the fees. And so it, that's for the fees that Anthony's looking over now.
Zach's not here, Dave.
Is Zach here?
Dave, did, did Zach say he's also taking the item back to council on September 20th for EVs to be funded out of the general fund? Remember how we, it was going to be CRA, and then CRA Board said no? But if not, let's make sure that gets on there for final action.
We, we could look at the folder during this meeting and let you know, we could, if we could get into the folder, it'll say in the financial impact. If it says that, then yeah, that's covered. But I just wanted, the reason I'm bringing it up is that I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that's, council supports that, because when Jenny redoes the budget on, it's September 20th, we come and, and council approves the fee schedule, and if that happens to be a part of it, the budget's already done. There's nowhere to go from September 20th, so that's the only reason I'm bringing that up. And, and I, I think this council's already decided that, you know, they moved it from the CRA to the general fund, but we might need something that's actually voted on.
Official action item.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, John.
I don't think it'll be a problem.
No, that's a good point.
Okay.
In the, can we just take one of these? And I want to make sure I understand it. If we take the first one, the CRA revenue, EV charging, has a negative 48,000 under effect?
Right, because that was the revenue that we would, the portion of the revenue that would have been charged in the CRA. So we will take that 48,000 out there, and the new line item amount to the right, so that would be a zero.
And the 48,000 was added under general fund revenue.
Right.
So the CRA contingency, third one down at 32,000, positive number?
Yes, because the, the expenses were 80,000, and the CRA, and the revenue was 48,000.
And so that increased the new line item amount to 478,051?
Correct.
So that was $32,000 less, to overstate it, prior to this adjustment?
Right, the net of the expense and the revenue.
Got it, okay. That makes sense to me, counsel. Thank you all very much for going through that. Any questions on these changes, effects? And as far as, John, the consensus or whatnot, you know, before the end of the meeting, if that's something we need to do, happy to talk maybe with?
Well, we can't do any official action or decisions tonight, but.
It could, but I think it's okay to go on the record where counsel had acknowledged that the EV charging stations, they understood that the charges were coming out of the general fund, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, is there any objection to that? I mean, I think that was implied at the last council meeting, that, I mean, if we're taking that money, not, if we're not spending that money from the CRA, we got to spend it from somewhere, and that somewhere would be the general fund.
Yes, I, that's what happened.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we talked about it and, and, you know, talked about moving the money and, to a different fund, but I don't know if I'm really sold on the EV charging stations as, as something for the city to fund at all. I know we talked about cutting the EV stations off for the free electricity, but when we had talked about it a year or so ago, I thought it was, we were going to get a company that puts them in, and they're going to charge, and we're going to get a percentage of it. You know, why do we need to go into the electric charging business? Again, there's a lot of cars that aren't electric. I was doing some research, and, you know, it's like, if there, if there's money to be made in this, why isn't the private sector doing it? And, you know, like, sales of electric cars are down from, I read that Ford Motor Company lost $4.5 billion this year, and that was up from $3 billion last year on their EV cars. I just don't know, you know, if we spend the money and put them out there, and we really don't have anybody using them, is it a waste of money? $80,000 could be used somewhere else for something we need more, that would benefit all of the city and not just the people that have electric cars, is my thoughts. So I don't know if I'm ready to make a decision on the EV stations tonight. And I guess we can't do it without the rest of the council here.
Yeah, but I think what you're. Sorry. I think what you're alluding to is, if the council decides to change their mind by a majority vote to not go forward with EV chargers, what would be the net effect on the general fund budget? John, can you answer that?
If we just completely wiped that out, Jenny's going to do a little computation there, but you're invariably, you're, you're removing any revenue you'd gain by it and any expense that you would gain by.
Correct, so it would, it would increase the contingency by $48,000 in the general fund.
That would be the net effect.
That would be the net effect.
Right, so we would also decrease the revenue projections?
Correct, decrease revenue by $72,000, decrease expenses by $120,000.
So.
But the $72,000 is an estimate. We're just guessing on that. We don't know if we're going to make 72,000 or 7200.
It's a projection.
Correct.
So what we can do is just write that down, kind of keep it in the back of our minds as, if, if council does not have the appetite to proceed with this, we can make that decision at the September 20th meeting, and we could know we could pull that much out.
I just think, you know, I know Don looked into it originally, and, you know, I thought that, like I said, it was going to be a private, and, you know, they came in and provided the service and just gave us a portion of the money. So that's where I was looking at. And then, like I said, I don't know if I want to spend that kind of money on something we don't, and it's not for everybody in the city. It's only for, for a certain amount of people, so that's my thoughts on that.
That's good. I think if we, yeah, just keep a list of these items that we want to question, and instead of going down a deep dive on that, I've just written down EV chargers as a potential line item, and if we want to keep going through the budget, we can circle back and discuss other items. Councilmember Willis, anything? And please, talk openly, freely, it's a workshop.
Well, the only, my only thought is our tourist population, whatever that might be, and year two revenue. I mean, that 180, or 120,000 is going to be year one. And if, I know, 72,000 is projections, guest estimations, whatever it might be, then we're looking at not having that revenue in year two. So, you know, it's, it's a consideration, but you got to weigh the net of it over several years. Have to think about it.
The, the lifespan of those EV chargers should be factored. I think we looked at that. Two years is remarkable. There's no other investment in, in city that I'm aware of that would get that quick of a return. And I agree, we don't know if that's actually going to happen. It might be half that, just say it's 35,000. Well, let me, and that, if that continued, it'd take four years. Well, what if it was half that? It would take eight years. I still think you're in a very good investment comparative to other returns in the city and a new revenue source. But yes, we don't know, no one has a crystal ball, but the, it's a different way of thinking for me, for sure, because a parking space has changed in value beyond what, what it is today. Because the way we fuel our vehicles today, and have for 100 years, on combustion engine, is we find a gas station, and no one really stores gas at their home. And sure, we all have our extras, especially during hurricane season, and generators and things, but, you know, for long-term commuting or things, it's not sustainable to continue to do that. And so, but what people do have the ability to do is charge their cars and power them. And so that's not an unfair thing, that's innovation, it's technology that allows us to do something that we could not do. You can essentially leave your house on a, on a full tank, not all homes, but most who have, have access. And therefore, you know, these public parking spaces, like parks, beaches, become the location where it's practical to take advantage of a car sitting there for types of destinations where people would stay for long periods of time, so three, four hours at the beach. And so there's no denying that people are going to continue to drive and park at the beach in Cape Canaveral. And if that's true, I think it's, we could say it's $5,000 a year in revenue. I think those EV charging maintenance and all will probably, they're probably warranted, I think they were for 10 years, maybe 15, but I believe with reasonable maintenance, they'll go 15, 20, 30, 40 years. Of course, you're going to have some costs along the way, but you're literally managing an outlet and distribution, which we do all over the city in-house, for the most part, and can handle these things with our electrician partners. And so it's a very easy thing to, to understand for me, as far as cost, opposed to managing a, a big facility. And I think we could do it well. But yes, I have the same concern on how big you go, but there's going to be a need with the growth in EV charging, golf carts, the OG original EVs, right? It's, I, I, I agree that, you know, just from an investment standpoint, the, the old proposal that where they were going to be a third-party owner that owned it and basically provided a service, that's essentially what we do today with Florida Power and Light. They'll do the same thing. And when you see why they're doing that, it's a, it's a, it's a good business model, because electricity is high in demand. And so when you step back and you look at our capabilities, I think the private sector has its fit, but to provide a charging, very simple service, and my point on the parking spot is, unless we're willing to hand the parking spots over, or lease the parking spots over to a private sector, those are public parking spots, owned by the people, the city administration manages them, there, that's going to, that's where I kind of tipped over and said, having an EV charger in those public spaces, now who owns it and all that, I'm open. I do think it makes sense, so.
One of the things we also have to consider, and I've been made keenly aware of it through the transportation, the TPO, and all the things I've been involved with, with that, is currently EVs pay no road use tax. So we're getting nothing for what they're doing on our roads. At the same token to what you're saying, we would at least, over time, be recouping some expense to the use of our roads. And without that, wherever they're charging, they're using our roads, using our parking spaces, they're putting the wear on it, and we're getting nothing back. The state is getting nothing back. Now, that may change over years, but it could take years for that to happen. So I think we've got to, we've got to factor in many different things there. And I'm kind of, I would rather see them pay some share of that expense. And that's the only way we would get it. In its current state.
And I think, I mean, we could overdo it. I do think you can go too far with it, you know, every parking spot or something that just didn't make sense for your population demand or tourism, but yes, well, we have that one listed as a potential item, and, and I think we can learn from other communities as well, if we're doing this.
Well, also, to your point, I think it would be, I wish we had thought of it, I wish I had thought of it earlier, but, you know, we currently only have those charging stations on city property. But even our crossovers, our beach parking is city property. People would come and charge there, go to the beach. So at some point, you know, if it, if we go forward with it, and after one or two years, we see they're still using them, we could put a couple at the beach ends and see what happens.
Yeah, there, I mean, there'll be value, the, the one over in the back of maybe Banana River Park, it takes seven years for it to pay for itself because of the use, but the one on Polk Avenue Beach entrance, you know?
Yeah.
Is never empty. And so they'll have, you know, the, the higher, higher in demand spaces would be rational to put them, and maybe some other factors, but I think we would figure that out.
It could be very beneficial to the city, I think, in the long term.
And if it, you know, goes the other way and exceeds projections, I mean, these are the ways that we can confidently keep taxes low, because those extra revenue sources that really, when you talk about the beach, I know Cape Canaveral drives down there, but that is the tourists that, that are coming here, the Orlando's, this is, they view this as their beach, and it makes sense for them to say that. It's the nearest beach to their houses, Floridians, and when they come here, you know, sometimes they leave their trash and they don't pick up, and I'm not picking on any particular community, but just from the West, I'll say, they, that revenue, it helps keep our local sidewalks get paved, and taxes low, and general fund healthy. I, I would say if we want to lower the projected revenue forecast, you know, that would be a, I think, a fair thing to, to do, if, if we, if that would make us feel better as well, so we can look at it, and, but if this was conservative in itself.
Well, I, I, I see your points and Don's too, as well. I just, you know, do we really want to get into that business? But then, you know, if the revenue, I think 72,000 is a lot for the first year. I mean, but I don't, I don't know how that would affect.
Well, at this point, Mayor, if we're talking about ideas to, to lower the millage rate, the revenue doesn't really factor into it so much as the, the initial cost, the outgoing. And, and that's Councilmember Kellum's point, is if we're going to do this program, then we're not going to change anything here, but if we, if we, if there's, if there's an appetite on council to not do this program, then we could remove that expense. And judging from what I'm seeing here, I'm seeing there's more support for the program than against it. So I don't know if we can. So, I don't know if we can go much further on this item, Mayor.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah, keep going.
I have a couple of questions, if you guys will bear with me for a minute. On page 37 of our budget, we have a capital outlay expense of bike lane striping for 50,000. And then up in the operating costs, we have street sidewalks, mobility and striping for 129,465.
So, the 50,000 is under the bottom capital outlay?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then?
Two, three, one left, okay.
And then the top is streets, sidewalks, mobility and striping, which we need all of the above, but why is there two separate charges?
Where's the second one? I'm sorry.
It's Tim.
So, it's in the middle of the page, under operating. It's the fourth one up from the bottom.
And it's titled Streets, Sidewalks, Mobility. Got it. Thank you.
And I'll hazard a guess.
Okay. I'm going to have Tim come up. I believe, was, I think this was for a certain, wait, sorry. The bike lane striping, was that for a specific job? Will you go up to the? I believe the 50,000 in the CIP was for a specific project. I'm going to have Tim speak to that. The 75,000 is just for general maintenance. That's why we moved that this year to the operating expense instead of having a CIP for those items.
That is correct. I think the total job that I, the project that I wanted to do for restriping bike lanes, including thermals, green markings and everything, I want to say it came down to about 125,000. But infrastructure maintenance has always had a line item in their budget for stuff like this. When I used to work in infrastructure maintenance, I remember seeing a line item for that. That's used in a broader scope of work. We could dip into those to finish the striping that I'm doing in the project, but my project was pretty much like Jenny said.
And if council would turn to page 99, that's what Tim's referring to, where he was going to do the green MMA paint, green and white striping for Ridgewood and parts of West Central. Page 99. Hence Jenny's comment of specific project.
The rest would be general.
So, the other items, Tim, the street sidewalk mobility, striping, 129,000, that's other things. So, that's going to be repairing asphalt, repairing curbs, doing sidewalks as necessary.
Yeah, I'm not, I can't say the line item, but I think you're hitting the nail on the head.
Yeah, it's like you said, a broader category and not just.
Throughout the whole city, not a concentrated project.
Right. There will be associated striping with some of that work, but it's not about the striping project that you're doing. Yours is just a striping project.
Correct.
But it's up, it's up 126% from?
Right. Because we moved the 75,000 that used to be in CIPs.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
And it was more for a general, it wasn't for a specific project. So, we discussed this year to move it to the operating fund and combine them all together into the streets, sidewalks, mobility, striping. Within that 129, so 75,000 is mobility plan, 30,000 is the street paving, and then there's different, there's probably seven other items with that.
And what Jenny's done this year, which I think has been absolutely outstanding, is that we looked real hard at the CIPs, and this was a perfect example of saying, wait, why do we have, why are we keeping and creating the CIP that's sitting here for 75K when it could be just put in operating because that's what it's for? Something, and so, hence the 50,000, the TIMAS, which is specific to a project, you'll see in a CIP. So, we've gotten a lot better with that, and Jenny went through and probably was able to move a number of things into operational expenses and reduce the CIPs because all you're doing there then is you're just creating, you know, you're creating more paper and what have you. So, I think that's a good approach.
If you're doing it every year, it's no longer a project.
Right, right. And when Tim gets specific and says, well, hey, I'm going to do this striping for this money on Ridgewood and West Central, that's specific, that's something he wants to get done. Everything else is general nature throughout the whole city to be accomplished, so that's the approach.
If I'm also not mistaken, I believe that this is a CIP under infrastructure maintenance, and I believe the other part of it is under CRA, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we're, the council's looking at, this is actually, this is IM right now. You don't have the budget in front of you, but there's, yeah, if you look at the CRA, there may be something.
There is. CIP number six in the CRA.
Yeah, and that might be for specific streets also.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
I just, I didn't want to have multiple projects named the same thing and the council to.
No, it's actually, it's actually broken out. It's broken out.
Well, that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, yeah. If it's in the CRA, then it's a specific street which is in the CRA, so then that's why the funding is in the CRA.
And actually, this year, I tried, if you look at page 99, if there's another department that is affiliated with the same CIP but in a different department, I tried to reference that. So, if you see under, on the right-hand portion at the bottom where it says CRA portion, so, in the same, on the CRA, then I tried to reference back to the IM. So, you know, sometimes we have Oak Lane in two different, I tried to make that a little easier and reference if there's.
It's way easier to follow than before.
Okay, good.
Yes, thank you.
On the same page, the 90,000 for City Hall office expansions. A couple of questions about that, you know, it says that we're hiring new people, so we need more offices. How many people are we hiring? And I know we're hiring an EM, IM guy.
IT.
IT.
IT manager.
I know it was one of those. And I'm thinking, you know, there's problems we have here with City Hall, air conditioning, this and that.
Absolutely.
Why would we spend more money on, I mean, is there people in the hallways right now that don't have an office? Can we wait? I mean, if we're hiring one guy, how many people are we looking down the road to hire?
At this point, it's just the IT person, and every office is full at this point. And we did push this off last year, but we want to hire that person. And let's keep in mind that the hiring of that person is an efficiency that should help us save money for our contract services, which is at an hourly rate, which is much higher than an employee would get. We get great service out of SAM. I'm not saying we don't. But having that person here who would be trained under the tutelage of SAM, and also will take over the day-to-day tasks that we don't need a SAM for, will bring that expense down. Also, taking over the operation of the AV booth back here, that person will be taking care of that as well, reducing that contract expense liability. So, yeah, you're adding a person, but you're also reducing this expenses here. I just wanted to add that. And having a place for that person is what this is for. But this is more than that. When we put this 90,000 together, it was the one quote-unquote waiting room upstairs that is unused as a waiting room. So, walling that off on a door and then the furniture. And the other one is in the unused storage room upstairs, that could be two partition walls put in that, and that could take, make three offices. So, altogether, you'd end up with four offices. We don't know when we're going to fill those up with people. We're only looking at one for this next year. But our thought was, if you've got crews here already doing the work, taking advantage of that while they're here, same materials, same type of work, doing the same thing in two places, knock it all out, and that's what this is for. But if we wanted to split it up, we potentially could.
Well, I, you know, I just think that, like I said, there's problems with City Hall, air conditioning, you had a plumbing problem not long ago. Where is that money to fix those things coming from? Why add more for office when we need to fix what we have?
We did fix those problems, and air conditioning, unfortunately, is always going to be an issue for us, everybody in our homes too. The plumbing issue was an unfortunate one, just sprung a leak in the pipe, and we had to chisel through some tile to get to it and fix that, and that's done. John, anything you wanted to add to that?
Just the other thing would be, obviously, Mickey, and that's where contingency is important because, let's just say, and God forbid, that the air conditioner costs us another $70,000 before September 30th. Hopefully, it won't, but hopefully, I don't know though. I can't predict the future. But if it did, then we'd be tapping into our contingency dollars, and so, of course, you see guys see the final roll-up at the end of the year, September 30th, when Jenny does the financials. But the answer to your question is contingency. Whenever we run over in a department or what have you, and there's no other line items in that department to draw from, then contingency, we transfer that money. Because that's for the unknowns, you know? I mean, I know Lisa's had to deal with probably three episodes this year of expenses for air conditioners, things put on order, what have you. Those are the things, that's why contingency is so important.
By the way, those are 2016 units. At 10 years, it's going to be time to replace them, so you're going to be seeing a CIP to replace those in the 2026 fiscal year.
Also, just to your question, City Hall maintenance, AC maintenance is in the line item of, on that same page, 546100, building and grounds maintenance, the 98,000. That's made up of about 20 lines, but that is included in that.
Back to your question about the office build-out, what would you like to see done there?
Well, I'm just, you know, you're saying you're adding four offices. Are we hiring four more people?
Not initially.
So, why do we need, I mean, can we just make an office for the IT guy?
What would the cost be to do one, do you think, did you get a quote?
I'd be confident saying that you can cut it in half right there and still have enough. The efficiency, the economy of scale was getting it all done at one time, but I don't know what it would be just to have the one done.
I think something else that's important, since we're talking about it, new positions and what have you, is we don't know what the future holds and what the needs of the city will be for new positions or unique positions. I think a good example would be, you know, we never had a sustainability resiliency department, and then all of a sudden, we're lucky that we have one, and we get Zach and Lexi, right? So, those were two people that were never really on staff. Maybe one of them was in the prior age but wasn't called a resiliency person. But just, all I'm saying is, unique positions like that, I don't know what's going to be required for the future. So, when you go ahead and you want to put three offices in that one room, you're basically doing something for the future. But if the need's not there, then council could determine whether or not, you know, there's a more economical way to approach the situation.
Also, one person is already sitting in that storage area. So, one person's, she just doesn't have an office, she's just.
Got a giant office.
Yeah, exactly. She does. She has the entire space.
She has a space in the corner.
So, really, I mean, so one person is already in the storage area.
Yeah, we have another employee who's in the records repository room next to the elevator up there. And that room is, over the years, getting transformed more and more into office as the records become digitized and go online. We don't need to store paper copies in boxes and boxes and boxes. Over time, that will be perfectly appropriate office, but we do have an employee in there right now too.
Well, I'm not too, you know, but does a director's need offices? You know, everybody needs office, but what happened to the old-fashioned cubicles? I mean.
That was a design element, and the City Hall Design Council at the time supported that. There was a space needs assessment done back in 2005 or 2006, and I remember that presentation, it was Architects Designs Group, and the council said, you know, had that discussion about cubicles and open work environments, and I remember them saying, that's just not the way it's done anymore. That's an antiquated way of doing business. You want to have these individual offices but have, you know, shared communal spaces that focuses on personal efficiencies, where people have their autonomy in their own office space. I think, I tend to agree with that. I think an employee can get a lot more done when they don't hear the noise of the conversation on the other side of the cubicle. And of course, it's a philosophical thing. We've seen people working remotely more and more, and we don't do so much of that, but people tend to do a lot better on their own, working and focused, single-minded on tasks, and that's what's behind that.
How much do we really use the council office?
Councilmember office?
Yeah.
It's on the other end of the building, Mia, you probably don't see it much.
It's depending on.
Well, he's, I think Councilmember Willis is referring to the councilmember office.
Yeah.
Council office.
I.
Well, I know the only time I'm in there really is when I'm waiting for an appointment to meet with Todd, with John, with whomever. Otherwise, I have an office at home that nobody has to see my piles of paper everywhere, so.
Well, those were put into the design with the intent and the desire to show appropriate respect for the elected offices. And the work that you all have to put into that, having a place to do that, that's a professional location, was a very deliberate design intent.
I understand that, and that's appreciated. I'm sure we all appreciate that. But if the need arises to put somebody in an office, I think we could easily vacate until such time as we could afford to build out whatever we needed. Just, you know, does that satisfy the immediate need?
Yeah, I would, I mean.
I mean, you're reluctant, I know.
You've already got me in the hook for saying we could do one. You're taking that one out. That's smart, I get it. Yeah, I think that we can flex that, and if the council's desire was to remove the nameplate of council member office and make that an employee office, we could certainly do that.
Well, I'm comfortable with just getting my mail from wherever anybody else gets it. Now, at such a time as we can build out and throw whoever's in that office out and we take it back over, but.
I'll take a cubicle, I'm good.
Yeah, well.
I think what really happens is everybody hangs out in Lisa's office.
Yeah.
Well, she has, she has the candy there. What do you expect? So, oh, well, I'm sorry.
So, if we gave up our council office?
We can push this back. I think we can just push this whole thing back.
Of course, we're only speaking for two of the four members that use that office.
We made one decision.
So, the next imminent hire for the city is the IT manager, and if that decision was to be made, there's no question that that would become the IT manager's office.
Yeah, and we would just push this build-out off to another year, depending on what the needs are in that next year.
Yeah, my thoughts are, it depends on, you know, the type of work you're doing, obviously. I think with the two options of having a private sound control workspace and/or, you know, sounds, light, distractions, vibrations, whatever, the one that you can control, those things is going to be the better option. But, you know, today's society with the, depending on the type of work, and obviously this is administrative, you can put noise canceling in, you know, in a lot of these IT guys or something. But those are not in our realm of decisions, and I think we're on the right track. It sounds like we definitely need a space for the IT person.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you were able to take that large room and divide that up, and they could work out of there, that works. The mayor's office is available too. The work of. And the work of the city is more important than, you know, our ability to meet. I could meet in a conference room. I could meet, you know, check my mail wherever. But I think we'll figure those things out. I'm willing if that's what's needed.
I just want to make sure there's no impression that staff is pushing council and mayor out of City Hall. That's not our goal.
No, just to get through. This budget, I think, is really tight. And so, we're trying to say, it's not no, it's just not now, and then how do we limp our way through? And maybe we...
I would make one suggestion. There might be a need for us to be able to access some files that we can't normally with our internet connection at home, that we would have to see when we get here. If there's any access that we don't have remotely to anything. Is there any files?
Well, yeah, there is. On the city server, there's a space called Common Docs.
And that contains areas divided up by different departments where they work out of. And that's a work product that they need to work out of. Also, that's where we also build agendas for council meetings and things like that. So I know I've talked to Sam about that, maybe creating your own folder or a directory where the council could work out of that if they wanted to, if you wanted to create documents and things like that. It's a records management-type structure. There are directories that I can't get into. I can't just get into finances directory. I can't just get into city managers.
I understand Councilmember Willis's comment. It's about having a place to log into that behind-the-firewall stuff in City Hall.
Yeah.
So one of the things, it could potentially be the Community Artifacts Room. Once the Cape Center opens up, the Community Artifacts Room, which is just outside that door, will become obsolete as a Community Artifacts Room, because everything that would have gone into that is going over to the Cape Center. That room, what was in my head about that room was a multipurpose room that's kind of quasi-public. In that, so, let's say you've got, the building official is going to meet with the developer, and they've got some large plans, and they want to, you know, this is the perfect place to do it. You have a table in there, a couple chairs, either on the plans, you can have a conversation. And it's still in this kind of general middle-city hall space, the public space. Likewise, you could have a code enforcement person. Sometimes, a code enforcement customer may be angry, and maybe they're just a little hot under the collar, and they say, "Can we step into this room, and we can close that door so we won't interfere with other business out here in the lobby?" That can be that kind of a space. That space could also be a place where there's a computer terminal for city council members to come in, log in behind the firewall to do what they got to do. So maybe that's like a multipurpose reuse of the Community Artifacts Room.
That's workable to me.
Well, also, another quick, quick thing to be done if you don't go that route, and we don't do the build-out of the big room, and council has a limited, council members have limited requirements, you know, that they, things they want to get done. We could always put a computer in the other corner of that big room and put up a partition, because if council is only going in there to run a report or something, then you don't, you know, you see what I'm saying? A computer could be any place, and...
And we could put the mailboxes in there.
Right.
That's true. So I think what I'm sensing is, well, we've got three councilmembers here. I know we're not making any decisions tonight, but it looks like there would theoretically be consensus for the councilmember and the mayor's office to be used for future expansion as necessary, instead of doing a build-out and thereby reducing this budget by that ninety thousand dollars?
Yes, I think the council would need to vote on it. Well, or whoever's purview falls under, yeah.
I brought up the idea. I'm all for it.
Absolutely. That's...
I say there's one right there, John. We can pull out.
Yeah, and I would just caution the mayor, though, here about the utilization of his office, because a month and a half out of the year, I believe there is a Santa Claus that sits at the table, and I don't know if he wants to jeopardize, if he wants to jeopardize that.
No, I use the office. It's valuable to me. It's very helpful to me, citizens. It's nice to be able to close the door so they feel like they can, you know, not disrupt people down the hallway. And, you know, some people talk louder than others. But, you know, even sharing that, just as a whole council is another idea.
So just reduce it by one and having one fully shared office?
Yeah.
And as you're, yeah, and then if you need it, you can take it over, and we'll go.
Okay.
Step out, kind of phase out.
But mayor, this doesn't mean that you have to remove the Santa Claus for the month.
Yeah, Santa is...
I don't think, yeah.
All right, so this is not the year we're kicking council out of City Hall. You're still going to have one shared office?
Yes, I think we'll talk about it the next meeting.
Okay, I have a few more questions, but you guys, I'm sure, have stuff to talk about.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
If you're ready.
You know, I've been looking at the budget. My family's ready for the budget season to be over. Trying to save, you know, trying to save money, not raise the taxes. But, you know, it's not always about raising taxes. Sometimes, you have to raise taxes. To me, it's about being good stewards of the taxpayer's money. So what I've been doing is going through and trying to figure out in my own head what we need, what we would like, and what's important to the people, the residents. You know, we, I think, we're at a really different point in our city where, you know, we have to make some decisions. We have projects that are pending, different things. You know, we go to the strategic planning, and this year it was great. We had the community input. And staff brings us projects, not a lot of new projects this year, but things that are going to cost a lot of money, and we have to figure out where we want to be. But to me, and I'm aging myself, it's like getting this year's catalog at Christmas and circling what you want for Christmas, and then figuring out what Santa can really afford. So I just think that, you know, we, at the strategic plan as a council, we decided to focus on flooding and infrastructure and really important things, rather than take on any new projects. So my question is, you know, do we need, you know, the promenade started as a promenade to connect the campus. It was years and years we heard that city council wanted to connect the campus. Well, now it's morphed into this giant project to, you know, do all kinds of things with Nancy Hansen Recreation Park, which is awesome, good. But it went from this one project to another giant project. Plus, we have the awesome Presidential Street Master Plan, which I think is phenomenal for our city. You know, we talked about putting stormwater in next door in the little piece of property we bought, and plus at the Nancy Hansen. So my question is, what is more important? Do we need, absolutely, we need stormwater to be taken care of. We had a study done at the Center Street Basin. We also did, there was a study also done in the Presidential Master Plan. And there was five conceptual projects that needed to be done to help with flooding in our streets and infrastructure and things like that. Like, you know, and the ARPA money that we received was supposed to go to this. When you look at the city survey of what's important to people, flooding was one of the major things that we were, that they said was important to them. The conceptual project, eighty-three percent of the people that did the survey for Presidential Streets, eighty-three percent said stormwater improvements were a priority. And sixty-six percent said stormwater, inflammation, and stormwater flooding was one of their priorities as well. I just think that we do, have we done everything we need to do to fix that problem? Because that, we agreed at the strategic plan that that was our major thing we were going to go for. You know, and then we have the Presidential Street Master Plan. My thing is, do we, we're getting the stormwater thing at Veterans Park. If we put stormwater in here in this little lot, when we figure out what we're doing with it, and we leave that expansion of that project away for now, do we have, you know, are we doing everything we can to address the flooding and the stormwater runoff? Do we need that, the Nancy Hansen and the Presidential Streets that are going to be redone with infrastructure, stormwater, and all that? Do we need all of that? Do we need to spend the money on the retention pond on Center Street to alleviate the flooding and the stormwater? It's not that I don't want to do these projects, and again, we've learned not to put things off because they cost a lot more money. But, you know, where are we right now in this city? Where do we want to go? I was excited about the bed board meeting. I watched it online. It was very good. I'm so happy to have them meeting and helping us with decisions we need to make. The CRA, you know, Anthony's presentation was awesome. And it's, you know, he said over and over again, the CRA money is to preserve and enhance a tax base. You know, are we doing that with the CRA money? You know, I just, are we spending the people's money the way we should? I think that the benefits in our city that we're losing, you know, we have a community center that's not open on the weekends. We have a splash pad that needs a bathroom. We still haven't done the concession stand. You know, these are little things that the people really want, and are we spending the money on those things and not big projects? You know, it's not that I'm against the Civic Hub. I'm not against that. I'm just saying, you know, we started out with this point four-two of an acre that was going to connect the campus, and now it's turned into this giant project. And I'm saying, do we need the master plan, and we need the Nancy Hansen Center? I understand that pickleball's important, but, you know, we had a double-wide trailer that all kids were invited to all the time at the city park. Now we have this beautiful community center, which, you know, when we talked about it and before it got built, the operating costs were estimated at ten to fifteen thousand. It's now ninety-eight thousand. I just think we really need to do what we can and do what the people have asked us to spend money on. You know, if we need to raise the taxes, we do. But if we have a splash pad that works, we have a concession stand, we have a community center that's open on the weekends, we have Nancy Hansen Center open on the weekends. We have no flooding, and we have short-term rentals under control and code enforcement keeping an eye on that. People will be glad that pay higher taxes. They'll say, "Wow, look at all we got, and we have to pay more taxes." You know, I just, that's where I'm thinking, and that's, the people I talk to, they're like, we, you know, we don't need, we need to fix the flooding. We need the rec center opened on the weekend. We need, and, you know, the funding that we put in the CRA for the residents and businesses to upgrade their, there was a lot of response to that. So there's a lot of people with a little bit of money that are making a difference in our city as far as, you know, building up the tax base, making property values better. I just think, you know, that's where I'm thinking. I, I'm going to throw this out there. John will probably have a heart attack.
Don't do that.
I was thinking, I went through the budget, and I thought, you know, let's just take the operating fund in each department and cut it by ten percent without the fire department or the Befard County Sheriff's. And, you know, rough figures, just with my little calculator, it would save like a hundred and forty-five thousand, a hundred and fifty-four thousand. I mean, this is just, I understand that things have gone up, but there's always cost overruns or cost where we say it's going to cost more than it actually costs. It's just something we can look at. I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but that's my thoughts. And this is what I hear on the street, what people are saying. And they understand things are going up, but they want, you know, the little things done. So that's all I got right now.
Thank you.
Would you like me to address any of those?
Yes, please. And if you don't mind, I'm going to, well, can we take a recess shortly after, if you...
How about I just cover stormwater?
Sounds good. Take your time. I don't want to rush, but I was going to call a recess.
I think the most salient question that Councilmember Kellum asked is, are we doing everything we can do for stormwater? And my answer to that is, we believe we are taking the most responsible approach to solving the known stormwater issues in our city. And that starts with, the first one is going to be the permanent pump on Center Street and the title valve. That's a five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar grant, I believe, Jeff, from DEP that's paying for that. We've already got the design done. Four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. That's going to cover much of the construction costs and the acquisition of the pump and everything. That drawdown pump, just to draw that water down when it starts getting high in the neighborhoods, that's right off the bat going to make a huge difference. The second and longer-term thing is the Presidential Streets Master Plan, which we all agree is just an awesome plan. That is intended more and more to be a solution for a vulnerable barrier-island community that doesn't have any other place to put its stormwater except currently, except for the river. We want to turn these rights-of-ways into places that are actually taking a lot of that stormwater and never letting it even enter the system. It's going to drain in where it is. So we think that's a huge burden lifted off of the stormwater system. And of course, there will be corresponding impact with no flooding or very little flooding. Will we have a Noah's Ark-type situation someday? That could happen. We don't know. And the third thing are these smaller projects, which you alluded to. We've got the portion of Veterans Memorial Park. We know it's a small infestation program. And on the Civic Hub, you know, it started as the promenade, as the purchase or acquisition of this, but it morphed into the Civic Hub because the intent there was to solve community needs for using this space for whatever we want, more pickleball, less pickleball, I don't know, whatever people say they're wanting. But it was brought up, I believe it was Councilmember Willis, that, hey, while we're doing all this, let's put stormwater storage vaults under all of the Civic Hub, not just this one little point four-two acre thing. And wow, that's a few acres now, when you look at all of that, if we're re-envisioning all of that, that can, I see that project taking, we said this is a three-to-seven-year project, I believe. Over that time, I can see that taking all of the water that falls on that Civic Hub property and all of that going into this vault system, as well as taking a great portion of the load that is upstream from that vault system so it stops it from ever entering the Center Street Basin, which is our most troubled basin. So that's my thoughts on the stormwater. Are we doing the most we can there? I think we've got a pretty darn responsible plan, and that's just the Center Street Basin. You've got the other basins we're doing, we've got money budget in there for possible pond, Center Street ditch, to treat that stormwater by storing it, if possible. And that's based on having a property available, if it ever comes available. That's going to help that basin. And you also asked about the Center Street and having the property there to store stormwater. Yeah, if it becomes available, we would love to do that. That becomes a huge capacity buffer, as well as filtering out more nitrogen and phosphorus before it even gets back into the baffle box, before it gets to the river. So those things are more, we don't know if we're going to get those. They're opportunity-based, those large property acquisitions. For the property that we do have, and we do have... For the property that we do have and we do have control over, yes, I think we're doing the most responsible thing that we can for those troubled basins. Mayor.
Thank you. That was helpful.
At the Nancy Hansen, I know I talked to Zach about this, and the trees that are over there and the grass that are over there. He said that that, they absorb a lot of stormwater already. So, you know, again, can we leave that, ripping all that out down the road? I know it'll cost more money, but if we have trees and grass that is absorbing the stormwater already, and we have pavement over here on this lot, I would say, let's do that, rip up the pavement, put those in, make it whatever. It seems to me that the promenade idea of connecting the campus was a, you know, good idea. But every time I go by there, there's a lot of people parking there, so maybe that's the best use of that space.
Yeah.
We're going to open the Culture Center, and when we have events here, there's no place to park, plus the Friday Fest and pickleball, which is, there's a lot of people parking there, so maybe that's the best use of that space. On Nancy Hansen, as far as making revenue, is doing good with the pickleball. Understand the shuffleboard is outdated, you know, maybe we could change that to tennis courts or pickleball or whatever. But I'm just, I'm just trying to figure, you know, where we're going and doing the best for the least amount of money.
That's a perfect segue for a commercial. We do have the second Civic Hub workshop coming up on September 19th.
Yes.
Is it Tuesday, the 19th? So all these thoughts, we want to hear and share. It'll be a city council meeting workshop, so we'll all be seated up here, and they'll be presenting where we are to date with the results of the surveys, the previous meeting, but also the public's welcome to be here to give us their thoughts on how we want to program all this space. So I'm glad that's top of mind right now. It's perfect for going into this second workshop. I want to hear all those thoughts. And anybody in the audience or anybody listening, please attend and give us your thoughts about how we should be reimagining this whole space, what we should do and what we shouldn't do. We need to hear all of that.
One more thing and I'll be quiet, I promise. At the bed board meeting, they talked about the CRA and how it's supposed to help build the tax base. We aren't building the tax base with CRA money right now. You know, as Mr. Hermanson said at the meeting, there's a lot of code problems in our codes that don't attract developers. Am I right in saying that? He was saying we need to fix our codes.
I, I heard him say that he's very grateful for what we have in Cape Canaveral compared to where he develops other places.
Oh, yeah, as far as hotels, yep.
Dave, can you come to a microphone?
Yeah, I do recall one of the things that Mr. Hermanson talked about was the need for codes. He was specifically looking at incentivizing developers to come in and develop in Cape Canaveral. And one of the things he specifically talked about was our residential densities. Right now, our highest residential density is 15 units an acre. And he was talking about how that may not be enough to incentivize a developer to come in and buy property, demo, go through all that cost. And, and, so he said, those are the kind of code amendments that we may want to be looking at if, if we, if we are serious, if you will, about removing blight and redevelopment.
But for, I can think of some impact on our, our, our tax base that the CRA has had. For example, the, the lift station six that was put in near the brewery, that was a major CRA project, and that enabled those new hotels that went up behind the brewery to be built. Also, we've got a developer talking to us now about another undeveloped parcel that would tie into that lift station. That couldn't have happened before without that CRA expenditure.
Good. And the other thing I know they talked about at that meeting was affordable housing and how the CRA, you know, the county and also the state are on everyone about creating more affordable housing. Well, with the sale of those apartment buildings down off of Canaveral Boulevard, we're going to lose all of that affordable housing, and the kids that go to Cape U are priced out of those places. We're a Title I school down there now with, you know, for free and reduced lunch and all because of the affordable housing. But that's something that I think we really need to follow up on as far as, you know, budgets and things coming up in the future.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a second. That is under discussion at the P&amp;Z Board right now. One of the things that the Board requested staff to do is bring back a discussion item, which will be at their September 10th meeting, I believe, to deal with affordable housing and start at least discussing it and kicking around some ideas what the city can do to, to assist that. But I think, yeah, at least at the Board, P&amp;Z Board level, they, they feel the same way. They think that's a, a major issue that could really have, have some deep impacts on the city if not properly addressed.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay. Well, let's take a recess, and if that's okay there, everyone, let's do 10 minutes, try to get back by 7:25 and, yeah, keep working through it, so. Yep. No need to adjourn anything.
Okay.
Good evening. Yes, we are back. Ten-minute recess called this meeting back to order. We are in our budget workshop here. Councilmember Callen, thank you very much for going through those. It's helpful to have the time to do that, and I was taking notes as you were walking, or working through that, and I want to circle back to a few of those as well. But, Councilman, and I know you said you were done, but please, we'll keep chiving in as much as necessary. Councilmember Willis, anything?
I have a question about the value engineering on the Veterans Memorial Park.
Yes, sir.
If you can tell us where we are, what might be possible?
Well, we don't know for sure until the fat lady sings, when we sign a contract is what I mean. But, once they're proposed, once the value engineering items are identified and proposed, and we have a budgetary number for that, staff will present that to me, and I want to make sure I feel like it's not watering down the project in any way. We need to get all of the things that we consider, those critical elements to that project. And if I feel that way after staff presents it, then I'm going to recommend that we go ahead and accept that value engineering revised proposal, whatever that reduced number is. And as far as timing of that, Tim, maybe a week or two out?
I'd say a week.
A week out?
Yeah.
Did that answer the question?
Then what could happen, once you sign that contract, if there is some savings?
I see what you're saying. So, if the value engineering exercise results in a lesser dollar amount contract than $750,000, yeah, that money that is saved from that exercise could be reduced off of this budget, assuming it happens in time. And what I mean by that is the contract has to be signed, and before the next meeting, John, which is September 6th.
September 6th.
So if that happens, yeah, we can bring that back September 6th. So whatever that savings is, yeah, that's eligible.
But I think also, though, the council has to be aware, just like Councilmember Callen brought up about, hey, where's the money come from if the air conditioner goes kaput and all this other stuff, and obviously its contingency? So, we want to be, if we have opportunities where we can cut costs like that, then if our contingency right now, like Jenny had said, is only at 171, potentially, maybe it goes up to 271. So, and that's, you know, that's critical for, 271 is even, you know, it's not a lot of money for a whole year, not knowing, you know, the unknowns of what could happen. So, you got to, I think you got to consider that. You know, when I hear that if we have X amount happening in value engineering, I get excited that maybe the contingency will go up, and then Councilmember Callen, you know, could sleep at night a little bit better. So, that's what...
So, I think there's, thank you, John, there's really two questions that have to be answered there. Number one is, if it's, if there's a realized savings, should it come out of the ARPA, or, I mean, should it go back to the ARPA, or go back to the general fund? And I think you're, I'm tracking with you, you're saying general fund. And the other question is, if you're putting that money back in the general fund, do you actually decrease the general fund expenses, or do you increase or replenish those contingency funds? That would make a difference on whether or not the military changes.
Okay. Next item, do we really need an annual strategic planning retreat?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking anybody that wants to chime in.
We, I can tell you this, we, I've been asked that by a few council members over the last, in the last year. And I'm not sure where it comes from. I think maybe some of them are feeling like, we're getting pretty good at this, it's getting better all the time, do we really need to do this all the time? And the other part of it is, we didn't start doing strategic planning retreats until 2004, '05, something like that, when Dr. Tom first came here? 2015?
Yeah, 15, because when I was hired in 2013, I don't recall having a strategic planning for the first couple of years I was here. And then I don't even think, I'm not sure we even did it every year. But, I think, when you bring that up, Councilmember Willis, is, you know, then, of course, I immediately think, yeah, do we really need to pay, do we really need to spend $16,000 next year for someone outside to stand in front of a powerpoint slide and talk to us about our weaknesses and strengths when council has, and, you know, and staff is doing an extraordinary job in identifying those things, identifying a mission statement, and those things. In other words, we've covered everything pretty sufficiently, and if council's looking at, like the mayor says, you know, hey, maybe we need to back off some of these projects, or, you know, be conscious about what we're doing, then the strategic retreat becomes nothing but an exercise. You know, maybe every other year, this is just me speaking, and I'll only speak from a cost standpoint, but, yeah, does council need to spend, does a city need to spend $16,000 on a strategic retreat?
I need to get some more clarification from John, if I may. That's $16,000, that's inclusive of room and fees and all the food and the...
Actually, actually, that's the whole, yeah, that's the whole thing. So, you have the speaker, you have his travel expenses, you have the money he charges to talk to council.
Of that money, now, of that $16,000, that's not all general fund funded?
It's half and half. It's shared by the enterprise fund and the general.
Okay, so we're not talking about any cuts to the enterprise fund, so we're only talking about general fund could potentially save $8,000?
That's correct, yeah. I was speaking in totality, but yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean theoretically, we could maybe, like you said, maybe every other year, or council could just decide, no, we'd have to budget for it. Yeah, we could just do it every other year, for example, or maybe every third year, I don't know. We have gotten really good at it.
I think we have really confidence, yeah.
Yeah? It wouldn't hurt my feelings if that's what you're asking.
Yeah. Well, I can see, I can see us having a staff meeting and hearing ideas, but to put the big production on, I'm not so sure. And many of those items, as we go throughout the year, will be covered in council meetings, in agenda items, what have you, and talked in depth. I could, I could see a benefit to just having a director's meeting or a staff meeting with council and going and...
We could call it a CIP meeting in March.
Yeah, yeah. And if the public wanted to sit and listen and contribute, then, I know there's certain residents that see a definite benefit in it. And the cost savings on staff, staff put a gazillion hours into preparing the strategic retreat. I mean, you look at the time spent, there's day spent. I mean, a good example's like Lisa, the executive assistant, she could spend total days having to support in, you know, do what's required to get that thing ready. So, there's a lot of impact.
Is there, is there some kind of consensus up here about changing the frequency?
My thoughts are, it sounds like, Todd, you, you would be okay without it, because I believe this was the former city manager initiated, as we were saying. And during the time of the day, that in Cape Canaveral, it might have made sense. I think changing how we do it is definitely something we should consider, whether it be in-house, or just changing it CIP. I would be more inclined to make it an annual CIP than a strategic every other year.
So, just an annual CIP meeting where we're not going over mission, vision, values, SWOT analysis, or any of that?
We can state them for once a year as a body, but we're not crafting it, we're not going in and trying to make changes. It's not something that I think we're trying to change. And that's what slows us down every year, goes, do we want to change the vision statement?
So, if I understand, we would just be reviewing the last report from the last strategic planning retreat for those SWOTS?
Yeah, there's no need to go through the vision statement, or, you know.
Okay. It's really about talking about the new CIPs at that same time of the year?
Yeah, it's early budget, so like in the calendar, whenever John, you know, is getting in that opportunity to, for staff, directors to put their numbers together and work. I mean, somewhere where it fits well for you, to where it's like, hey, I think we're ready, but not so late that you, council hasn't had a chance. Because the one thing I benefit from was the, when they sat down, the way it started, it was very, you know, here are the presented, proposed projects from city staff, they would, council would review. That's continued on, but when you came on, you helped and started implementing, everyone getting our feedback prior, and, you know, staff did a SWOT analysis, well, so did council.
Right.
And then it was early enough where John could integrate it into, in the budget. And, yeah, yes, all the above sounds good.
I think the framework is built into it now, that we know what we need to be saying, assuming we're here.
I just want to caution, I'm no Doug Thomas, I'm no Tom Frehhoed. Those guys have skills that I don't have to lead us through that kind of an exercise. This would be a very stripped-down presentation of CIPs more than anything else, early in the process.
And the end of March, first week of April is perfect for finance to prepare and be ready to have a CIP, you know, our CIPs, because then we have already worked the whole month of March with the directors to see what type of CIPs we're going to present to council. So, the timing's about the same, in the March, first week of April, and then after that's done, Jenny and I are working on the whole budget to get the whole, you know, get the whole budget done, so.
So, if that's consensus, we'll just take the strategic planning retreat out of this year's budget, maybe the following year we'll bring it back, maybe we won't. And we'll just understand that we're going to schedule that CIP meeting for that same timeframe. We'll have an agenda come out a week ahead of time, so city council has time to chew on these CIPs, just like we did the strategic planner. You've got it all a week ahead of time. And any things that you want to put into it, we just make, we'll just make it like a CIP workshop, and council can put their ideas into it as well, and, just like we do any agenda, we create it in time, put it all together, and we send it out and have the meeting. Let's try it, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we're just sharing ideas today, and if we're inappropriate, the next meeting, or that's, my point was, I think it's an administrative decision, largely, too.
But having, having three council members here helps me to know that that's the direction you guys will support.
Yep. I also want to just put up, because this isn't its own line item in the budget, what was budgeted for this year, upcoming year is 6,750 from the general fund and 6,750 from enterprise. So, just so we have a number in mind, what that would save.
And as you delete these, as we delete these lines as we talk, basically, that money is flowing into contingency, both, you know, in the general fund, and in this case, $6,700 in the enterprise fund. So, that's where that money's going right now, as you delete, you know.
Okay. Okay. So, the total number was six, I add the two, 6,700?
6,750 general fund, and then 6,750 out of weight enterprise.
Not the 16,000 we were saying earlier?
No.
No, that was the total amount, Jenny's captured the total amount this year that hit the, hit the all funds.
I think that was a little over budget, what we thought.
Okay. Well, good, that's great, thank you.
Can you read off the list of, list of things that we agreed on already?
The city hall build-out, $90,000, IM-13, and the strategic planning. Those are the only two things that...
And then, any realized savings from Veterans Park?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. That's, that's just an unknown right now, so.
Right.
But it will be something.
Is there consensus for me to add these three items so far to this list that you want to see changed in the next budget you would get to vote on for the meeting on the 6th?
Yeah?
And again, I would flow those all the way through contingency, and then you all would decide on the 6th if you're voting for a different rate.
Millage, yeah.
Yes, so, but for then, it would go to contingency.
So, September 6th will reflect all the things that council has a consensus on, and how that affected the contingency. And then, at that point in that meeting, council will talk about where they want the millage to be, and, and then, then we will adjust accordingly if council changes the millage.
Okay, so we're not talking about reducing any general fund expenses at all, we're just talking about putting money back into the contingency?
Well...
Well, you're deleting those items which is flowing in, once you don't spend the money, it goes in contingency, that's all.
Then, for instance, if there was a, you know, if there was a different millage rate suggested that had to cut, you know, then we would decide if we're cutting that from contingency or other things.
Right, okay, gotcha.
And that doesn't have to be the end of the list tonight, just what I have, so.
Okay, we're making some progress, Mayor.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Willis. Could we delay purchase of a resiliency EV?
Dave, that's under your department, would you mind answering that question?
I'm sorry?
Vehicle, vehicle purchase?
Yeah, we talked about that this morning.
That's...
Yes.
That's 26,000.
Thank you, thank you.
That's 26,000, just push back another year.
It could be moved out a year, okay. Was that fast enough, or did you expect? I've got nothing else to say after that. I feel quite wordy compared to Dave.
That was on the record, yes.
And, and Mickey stole my thunder on the office space retrofitting, so, that's all I've got right now.
So, the item is 104, delay, okay, RD-1?
RD-1. Push it out to the 24, 25.
Okay, good deal. The total expenditures for this year, as printed, not with these changes, out of the general fund, is, I just want to understand, does it, how much did it increase by?
The 23.
I'm trying to find it, where, general expenditures, the total general fund expenditures, I got my pages.
Page...
Page 13.
It's back.
Five has it.
Oh, page...
So, 23 is revenue. Well, let's just start on revenue. So, the propose, the proposes, the gray column or green on the screen, right, the bottom line is 22,314,230 dollars, the very bottom.
The very bottom.
Yep. So, that's the total general fund proposed revenues. And last year's proposed revenues, I go two lines over to what's called original, is that right? Which is the 21 million right there in the middle, 187,000. So, that, if I was to look at last year's budget book, that's the number that we proposed. Is that correct? The 21,187,000, I haven't, I don't have last year's, nor, I mean, if it's off, it'll, I guess, it says original. Does the word "original" mean?
It's the 21,191,371, and I've just noticed a, there's an error in the original.
4,000.
Yep, somewhere didn't get pulled over.
That's okay, but...
So, yeah.
So, it's 21, yeah, 21,1, and it's 22,3 now.
Okay, so the budget that we adopted was 21,187,000, that's what this is saying, whether that number's exact, but...
I got to fix that.
The 21.18 million is the budget we?
21,191,371.
Oh, so amended is the number that we?
There's just a, there's a...
That we passed or adopted last year?
Yes.
Okay.
The original should match that, and it doesn't, so I've got to, some formula must not have pulled over.
What does "original" mean?
Well, "original" means each line item that you adopted. Now, during the year, we may have some budget transfers.
So, "original" means adopted? And then, is this more like actual?
Well, amended means...
Changes.
Changes, right.
To the end of the year.
Right. That's so far this year, any amended amounts.
Okay, so we had 21,187,000 roughly, and there, it's just $4,000 change?
There's not a $4,000 change, that is a mistake. The revenue doesn't ever have budget amendments until the end of the year, so.
Okay, got it.
The expenses do. We do some amendments.
Okay, and then the two ones that say "actual," those mean actual, so at the end of the year, audited financial, the final number?
Correct.
Okay, so we actually spent in 2020, 2021, 17, or revenue, I'm so sorry, we brought in 17,243,646, right? That's what happened in 2020, 2021.
Correct.
And then, the next year, revenue was higher, up to 19 million. Where do I go to know where we are this year, at the actual year-to-date? Is that the finance, the latest finance report that we provide in the council?
The July, yep. You have them through July.
Do we know what our total year-to-date actual revenue is? I have that actually, because I still have last month's agenda. I'm going to just see if I can...
That was probably through June, I just finished July's.
So, yeah, this might be a month behind, but I don't, okay, total expenditures for the, or total revenue for the whole general fund says 15, this is the June, you're right. So, 15,893,528 is what we had brought in for the period ending, ending June 30th. And the original budget amount right here is 21 million. And so, we've got our revenue, we've got a few more months, but we're expecting, or I would imagine, hoping that the remaining balance comes in. Do we have any indication of how this year's going to end with revenue?
Well, we do know, we do know that in July's financials just got done, and then you'll have August's financials and September's financials, so you've got three more months. And you'll see July's financials on September 20th in the monthly financials. So, it'll be, it'll be reflected there, that'll be, that'll be an accurate true-up there through July, which you will see in, on September 20th, because we just got done with them now. Matter of fact, the city manager is just about to approve those, give them to me, and then I will post those for our next meeting, which is September 20th. So, we, we could do an, we could do an estimate, Mayor, based on run rates and what we expect, but at this point, you know, we would be able to tell you... But at this point, you know, we would be able to tell you, you know, tomorrow where we're at, where we feel like we're at in July or, you know, or later in the week, we could tell you what, what our numbers rolled up to be in July. But no, I can't tell you exactly where we'll be the end of August or September. I could give you an estimate when we look at that, but I can't tell you like we're gonna end up here, because I don't know. But I could give a good estimate.
Do we have today, do we feel that we are going to see that amount of revenue coming in? Has anything happened in the first eight to nine months that would, you know? I think we've collected 100% of the ad valorem taxes, 101%.
Right, right.
Okay, and that was, I mean, just if there's any, if it looks like we're tracking okay, we can expect that to come in. That's, because we're looking two years back, but in this view, I'm trying to see where we are. And so when I look at the ad valorem taxes of, according to June, 101% came in. $5,581,988. I don't imagine that's gonna grow too much from here on out.
No.
Okay, so when I go back to the page where we were on the ad valorem taxes, or the general fund revenues, was that 91? Yeah? So 91, oh no.
I think you're looking at page 22, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you're looking at page 22.
Pull that page out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're looking at where?
Well, yeah, 23, I think. Oh, yeah, 22 is where the line item, so when I see ad valorem current, what were you saying originally is 5.5 million? That's roughly the same number over here, but this amended, is there any way that, you know, we can have this say actual year-to-date? Because that number is so much more meaningful to help us.
Except the problem with doing actual, and we used to do that, is when we do the budget, it's so far, you know, we're doing it in March and April. So, you know, and you could use, you know, the financial, the monthly financial for that.
And then the audit is done in December. The financial statements are not complete and the audit is totally certified February when we present to council. So the actual amount you're looking for will be contained in the financial statements that will happen when the audit is complete.
Right.
Which will be in the state of the city report also. Yes.
Yeah, I think we would know it'd be estimated. It's just a request moving forward. I think if we, or figured out a way, that would be good. But nevertheless, I understand that. And so with the total revenue coming in, if I go to total expenditures.
That would be on page 45 at the bottom.
Thank you. Okay, so we have 22,314,000?
230.
Which is.
That's the general, yeah, that's the general fund expenditures.
And so two years ago, so I'm holding page 23 revenues side by side with it, but when I look at, so like the actual revenue in 2020, 2021 was 7,243,000. The next year was 19,916,000. When I look at the expenses on the 2021, 2022, it's 12,483,000.
Right.
At the very bottom.
The 21, 2022 actuals included the $5 million of ARPA. So that's why that's a little skewed on the revenue.
So that ARPA was factored in the revenue, but because we didn't spend the ARPA, we had a surplus.
Correct.
And that cash rolled forward.
Correct. And that's what we're pulling in as cash.
Yeah, okay, I follow. So today, our ARPA cash is cash forward, right?
Correct. As we use it, we're pulling it in as cash forward.
So 2 million is the remaining? Okay, so our increase, the percentage, I'm still on page 45. The percentage increase, that 5% in expenses is measuring the gray adopted 22 million. It's, is 5% higher than, well, it does, I guess, original or amended, it's the budgeted amount from last year?
Correct.
Or at least the amended budget. So this is 5% higher, our expenses out of the general fund.
Correct.
Okay. And then our, our tax revenues on the page 90, where it summarizes the, every year, the tax increase, the chart that's put together on page 78?
Page 78?
Yes. So we were talking about this last time, the bottom line, the 15.66%. We can grab the same number, yeah.
Is the increase in revenues from the previous year, the 1.7?
From ad valorem only, though.
Yeah, total assessed taxable valuation, the 1.7 to the 1.9. In the third column, that's what that's referring to, the 15.66. That's the change in revenues. So your revenues were 1.7 billion in '22, '23, and in '23, '24, it's 1.9 billion, which that tracks is a 15.66 increase because of the total assessed taxable valuation.
We're not talking about revenue.
No, we're talking about the valuation that was assessed on all the property in Cape Canaveral.
So you're, you're saying that 15, well, the header says change in revenues, not change in taxable.
Percent change in revenues, yeah.
So that is the change in the 6.4 million over the 5.5?
Middle column.
Yes.
If it, that last year's revenues was 5,576,000. This year, we're expecting 6,450,000, which is 15.6% higher.
Let me just, let me just do this. It's probably the relative to the same thing. Yep, okay. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the rollback rate, the change in the rollback rate to the current rate, do we know, we know the current rate's 3.5716. I don't have the rollback rate. I actually have it written down. Obviously, you know, do we know what that percentage change is?
You mean as it is to be presented this year?
Yes.
Yes, it is, and per Florida statute 200.065, the percent increase over the rollback rate should be based on the aggregate rates, which that's how we will present it on September 6th. The aggregate rates basically are the two rates that the city has. And so what it comes out to is 9.45.
9.45, so the general and library combined government millage?
Based on aggregate rates will result in a 9.45 increase.
Over the rollback rate?
Right.
Okay, so if, is that the number that we would go to if we asked how much the tax rate is increasing from compared to last year, the rollback rate? I think.
Well, that, that increase is based on, let me, let me, that increase is based on the tentative proposed rate that we talked about in council, okay? Where we want to be at the 3.5716 to satisfy everything council wanted as compared to the rollback rate, the aggregate rollback rate. That's what the 9.45 is. So that's what's happening this year.
So which number, because the change in last year's millage rate and this year's millage rate, that, I don't know what, I don't understand the value in that. I would rather see the change in last year's millage rate. And because you can ha, your millage rate can decrease. You know, we can say we decreased the millage rate, but if property increases in value enough, it could actually result in a tax increase compared to last year's payment.
A rollback.
So you can say we roll, yeah, I mean, there's, you could have a tax decrete from last year's millage rate to this rate. And if property values increase, and we've seen, you could actually end up paying more depending on where you go. But no, over the rollback rate, that's, you can't, I don't think you can do that. That would, but. So it's, it doesn't tell us a lot. And what I'm trying to understand is, I was talking about in the last meeting, is how do we answer the question, how much are my taxes being raised? And the expenditures that we're going through today, I think we've seen that number. And understanding those is why, but I'm trying to figure out what is the increase.
Yeah, it gets a little bit confusing, but on this page, on page 78, the 4.06 is representative of that real percent change in ad valorem rate is just comparing last year's millage to this year's millage. That's why it comes to 4.06. On page 78, looking at the last two lines. So that's 4.06. But when you talk about this year in terms of the rollback rate compared to where we want to be, that's a 9.45%. So if somebody was to ask you, how much, how much is the rate going up? Like, if we go with this and we don't go to rollback, how much is the rate going up? Well, it's going up 9.45%. The aggregate rate is 9.45. Now, the last part of this is something that's not looked at because the total assessed taxable value changes, so that, 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 that changes like that. So, and I, when I listen to you talk, Mayor, what basically I think what you're saying is, you know, I'd like to see something where it says the rollback rate last year was 3.4297. I'm just throwing a number out there. And the rollback rate this year is 3.5127. You know, something like that. This chart doesn't show rollback to rollback.
It's just a suggested improvement that would help because the example is, you, like, take 2018 and 19. The millage rate was 3.82. We had 1 billion, 1.2 billion dollars in property. We brought in at 95%, 4.4 million. And then, yeah, the next year, taxes decreased, the millage rate, 4.73%. A decrease, but the total revenues, now I know there's a lot of factors with new construction and things, but you could apply this same principle down to the individual trim notice property tax bill. And I think we know that that's not possible. And so the decrease in millage rate, I think that column's valuable, but if we can just compare it to whatever the rollback rate was from last year, because I think that's, that number is the 9.65. Is that correct?
No, the 9.45 is just the comparison, the comparison which has to go on our resolution that is between what the aggregate rollback rate is to where the aggregate millage rate we want to pass. In this case, 3.5. Okay, it's on.
No, we, I think we're on the same page.
Okay, yeah.
So that is the, just under 10%. I would think that's the number I would use in saying, well, it affects everyone's tax bills. Definitely homestead exemption, I can't tell you how much your taxes are going to increase on your bill. But I can tell you that if we would have kept revenues the same, the rate that we would have had to keep it at, called the rollback rate, was this, we went 9.5% above the essentially last year's rate.
Yeah, I think where people get confused too is, you know, when you have a rollback rate of like the 3.8288 in 18, 19, as you're showing, and you go to 19, 20, and then the, the millage rate, I should say, and then the millage rate goes down and you're looking at a column over there, well, what was the change in the ad valorem rate? Well, you guys lowered the millage rate, so it was a negative 2.7. But then, it, what gets confusing for people is, then the gross taxable value, though, increased from 1.2 billion to 1.3 billion, therefore, the increase was 3 point, uh, the, then that generated, you gotta go to the column for the budget tax, 4.4 million in taxes, the 4.6 million. And then you'd see where the change in revenue would up 3.82 because the gross taxable value went up, even though you decreased the millage because the gross taxable value, everything's worth more? So then obviously the change in revenues.
Because decreasing the millage doesn't really matter. What they didn't do that year, I would imagine, is they, they did not decrease it below rollback rate.
Yeah.
They increased taxes that year. And so when, when citizens look at this column, it's like you see those negatives lowering taxes, oh, it's only 4%. To me, I want to be able to communicate this and most importantly, understand it so we can make decisions. The 9.5% is gonna increase over rollback rate is gonna result in about 15.6% of increased revenues. We're gonna see six for the first time in Cape Canaveral history. We only stayed in the fives for two years, four for four years, and we stayed in the threes all the way back to 2007. But I'm, I'm looking at the projects that we discussed today. I think all of those are great ideas and we should try. Is there anything that our city staff would say that could be delayed or reduced down? I'm not talking about the, the really little stuff, but the project sizes we were working on? Anything $10,000 and up?
I plan on this answer because I thought that question might come up and, and the more I thought about it, the more I realized that we can't present a budget to you that has got that, some kind of fluff in there that council didn't want. So the answer is no. There's, there's nothing in here that should surprise anybody. These are all the things that it's gonna take for continuity of operations, plus the things that council wants to get in recognition of where we are in today's economy with this inflation. So there's nothing else that staff, and we have this discussion, there's nothing else we can think of. I mean, there were some creative ideas put out here tonight, but they're kind of new ideas to us tonight, like, hey, what if you didn't add those offices? You know, what if you did put the realized savings from Veterans Park? You know, those are things we wouldn't think to put into a budget. That, that's the value of these meetings, but there's nothing else that we have.
And there would be very few items, Mayor, that, and, and the city manager's right on target here. The only other way you could look at, and, and there's, there's virtually nothing in the budget like this, but something that, that doesn't benefit the taxpayer. And the only thing I could, as I look through the budget, it comes to mind is if you're trying to do something nice like the $7,500 volunteer luncheon that council wanted to do for volunteers or whatever. Well, you know, if you're asking the city manager, is there anything in there around 10,000 that, you know, could come out? Well, I'm just saying, there, there you go, there's $7,500.
But I wouldn't propose that because council told me to put that in the budget.
Right, 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 right. And because council told us to put it in there. But, but all I'm saying is, I'm just answering your question to say like, well, if I took something away, what if, what effect does that have on the city of Cape Canaveral? You know, council would have to tell us, well, you know, whether it has an effect or it doesn't to take the $7,500 out there. That's just an example.
I, yes, I'm not saying that we should remove things that do, does not have a positive benefit, like, you know. I agree that any investment that I'm seeing in here. benefit, like, you know, that, I agree that any investment that I'm seeing in here would positively benefit the residents. We can keep buying, and that, that simulation never ends. Where I'm standing is looking, zooming out in Cape Canaveral and saying, do we have enough funds to provide adequate level of service, as you said, Todd, core services? Well, we've had, we have more funds than we've ever had, and I think the answer to that is yes. I'm seeing with an increase of almost a million dollars in revenue, that I believe we could get by with the same revenue as last year, even high fours, and not make anything drastic as far as, you know, our employees and the importance of taking care of our team and compensation. I think this council stood five oh on that, not talking about police and fire, stormwater, wastewater, but the, the parks, rec, cultural leisure services budget is a place that we all have to usually look at, and all those items will benefit the residents, but we have to say, maybe we don't do that this year because it allows us to, you know, manage our, our cash flow and money a little bit tighter than we would want to. And we're very blessed to see this increase in tax revenue so that we don't have to do anything drastic, but we are. I mean, we're going almost ten percent, and I don't like that, and I think a lot of the residents do not either. And so where, where I want to, if I'm asking, if I guess, as a percentage of the budget, what we're calling, um, I don't know, cultural leisure services, anything under, under that area, where do I see what percentage of the capital projects, or just a general idea? The pie chart, I think we had breaks down by department, but do we have a, a way to see what percentage of the budget right there? So that's the, that's the tax of our expenditures go into that department.
Right. If I could interject, Mayor, too, is that?
Parks Rec, Community Affairs.
Eleven percent, ten point five five.
Okay, so, and, and I see two point three million dollars, this is the?
Correct.
The, the fund, the operating, this is?
And Veterans Park is the big cut in that, the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Veterans Park is in there?
Yes.
Okay, so the two point three million dollars makes up which percentage? One more time, please, Jenny, thank you.
Ten, ten point five five of the total general fund.
That was the chart, well, there was another one, but that's not.
I don't think there's a chart for that, but I just quickly did the percentage.
Thank you, Mia. I think I was mixing them. There's one more, but it's not the one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So ten point five five percent, yep, that makes sense, two point three million. Now, does this includes Veterans, the capital outlay, right?
Right.
Listed very nicely. However, does this include CRA items?
No.
Can we go to the CRA breakdown and get a total amount of Parks Rec and Community Affairs? I think.
In the CRA?
Yeah, so I, if I go to the budget, wherever, I think I could look at it in a couple places, but if you get to a place to, the CRA fund, and we?
Are you looking at the budget or the CIPs?
I'm, I'm in the CIP, but the budget might be easier, so.
Page fifty-seven is the CRA budget.
Okay, fifty-seven. So in here, there's some resiliency projects, I think, capital outlay. So just starting at the top, the grant programs, no, that's, I understand that CRA capital initiatives, that doesn't have any money in it. Mobility striping, no. West Central Therm, no. Presidential, no. C five, construction resiliency upgrades, to me, that's benefiting the C five, that needs to be just known, I understand how it's accounted for here, but I would say that is ninety thousand dollars, right, that goes in. The Canaveral City Park upgrade is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, I would say that's a park upgrade. Civic hub redevelopment, that's a hundred and fifty thousand, that's a, is that right? Yep.
Yeah, that's for the design and.
The design, and then bike lane striping, uh, or no, Cape Center is another thirteen Bike and EV, no, not so much, so.
I think the reason we put?
About six hundred thousand? Go ahead, Jenny, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. The reason we put any C five upgrades, Cape Center is in the CRA is because when we did construction, that was out of CRA funds for those, and these items are permanent fixtures for those buildings.
No, and it, I'm not questioning, I, it makes sense to me, what I'm trying to do is to look at the amount of money that will flow into benefit our residents, the parks, all these, every improvement, I'm not questioning, they're great, they'll do some good things. It's roughly six hundred thousand, just back of the, you know, going down the line there. And then, staying on page fifty-seven, so that leaves the remaining, which is grant programs, I think that is purely CRA economic initiatives, capital initiatives, that doesn't. Mobility striping, West Central Therm, Presidential Streets, bike lane striping, and EV station upgrades are all infrastructure maintenance type projects, right? If you had to, if it was coming out of the general fund, would, that's where they would go? And so out of the one million fifty-eight thousand dollars, about six hundred thousand of it roughly is Parks and Rec, and then the remaining balance is, is the majority infrastructure maintenance. So it's really two departments out of the CRA capital outlay, two areas within our city, eleven parks, whatever we have in total, we are investing in. The six hundred thousand on top of the two point three million puts us really at about three million dollars, and this is including operating out of Parks and Rec and the capital improvements, is that?
You've got the Presidential Streets in there, too.
But I didn't include that in my math.
Okay.
I'm calling Presidential Streets, infrastructure maintenance, unless, if, if we didn't have the CRA, what fund would that come out of? Would I assume it would? I don't know.
If, if we, if we did not have the CRA, these, some of these projects could not be done.
Well, I'm not asking that.
Oh, okay. Because although we got a million, our expenses have went up uniformly with our revenue.
But the, a, a street improvement, such as the scope of work of Presidential Streets, that'd be an infrastructure maintenance project, right?
If it was, if we didn't have the CRA, correct, yeah.
And I think every other project, with an exception of grant programs and capital, the grant programs would probably be more of economic development, right, or?
Right, community development, whatever, yeah.
And, and so the CRA is funding these, and so if it's six hundred thousand, three twenty-five, plus that, we're at the three million, that's, that is a lot of money going into, like I said, all these great parts, but the list is long, and so instead of removing projects, can we reduce these beyond, I love the Veterans Park idea, are there any others that we can reduce? First, the vehicle replacement for this department is, is there, that would, I'm just going to flag things that, that if, if I'm, I've heard, I think, from the council and city staff, and I'm going to go down just things that we could consider. The vehicle replacement, use what you have this year, or reapply, or find something from another department, and I would apply that down the line as much as possible on vehicles. I, I do believe that, that there's some older ones out there, and I see there's a couple of trucks in infrastructure maintenance, but in this particular department, in our little city, and the campus is thirty-six thousand dollars on the new car, I think we could find something more affordable or strike it altogether. Gymnasium court dividers, I think that should be, that should be struck and/or fundraised through the community or some sort of initiative, if that's something that's, that's going to help for now. The Canaveral City Park upgrade for ten thousand dollars, I think that's, that makes a, a reasonable and good improvement. And like I said, reducing these are, are there, too. Can we get dividers for half the amount of money? Veterans Park redevelopment, hopefully we can do what we were talking about, Value Engineer, I knew the community has wanted that for a long time. And on the CRA side, I agree with some of the comments I heard about the, I'm, I'm on page fifty-seven now, for the programs, the, the big one is the three hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is the, is that Canaveral? I need a ruler, my lines are.
The City Park upgrade.
Okay.
So, Mayor, that one, there is some room, we could possibly split it into phases. Molly, can you talk about how you might split that up?
Okay, is that on?
Yes.
So, Canaveral City Park redevelopment, that is one of the projects I inherited, and a little bit of history on that. The original plan by the previous director of this department, when it comes to, and I'm getting a real good lesson in this, when it comes to playground equipment, you don't even want to know what the prices of those are. And then when you see the price, to actually install it, the rule of thumb that they, that all these companies I've been talking to use is, basically, it's about half of the cost. If you have a forty thousand dollar slide swing combo, it's going to cost you twenty thousand dollars to get it to your property and have it installed. So there's nothing cheap about playground equipment, which is important, especially given our environment, the fact that children are climbing on things, like, it has to be safe, it has to be sustainable. But the reason that that park redevelopment made it into the agenda, or into the budget, was because the original plan that Gustavo had was to do the playground at Patriots and the playground at Sandpiper, replacing the, the equipment there because he knew he could get kind of a better deal by making it all one company, one bid, one, you know, one project, all at once. The funding for Patriot, which you'll see, hopefully, if we can get all of our numbers together, the proposal from Play Space Services, we actually got a grant for that, and that's the only reason that one even stayed in the budget last year. So this one is a carryover, the, the park is not falling apart, nothing's, it's, it's, there's not a, a safety risk with the equipment, the equipment will last, we can still maintain it, and we can still get parts for it. That tends to be the issue with the lifespan of equipment, is eventually they stop making parts to replace it, and then you can't fix it, so it's usable and safe. So the equipment that's in Sandpiper Park right now is fine, and one of the things that we could do to lower this overall number is we could break the, the specific needs and prioritize the specific needs of the park and spread it out over a couple years. We can get some more lifespan out of the spider web and all of the climbing equipment, but one of the things that I really, I, I can't speak for a previous director, and I can't speak for what the thought process was behind it, but the one thing that I would like to get done in the next fiscal year is finish that fence. The fence should have gone all the way around the park. But if we just look at that, the reason that didn't actually get included is because when we had our fence contractor out there installing this, you know, the past fiscal year, we're like, hey, what's it cost to, you know, just do the rest? It was over seventeen thousand just to finish that side of the fence, so we're like, ooh, okay. Well, we have this playground that's been talked about for several years, it's in the budget, we'll add some more money to that overall project CIP, and we'll just knock out the whole park. But if it's a matter of needs and wants and priorities, and if I could prioritize certain elements of the park, I would love to just fix the fence and get the cameras up, and we can talk about the rest of it later.
So what number are you looking at there?
I am looking, I don't.
Well, I, on page fifty-seven, where it says Canaveral City Park upgrade is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, I just want to point out that that is CR one, which is the City Park redevelopment of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, plus fifty thousand CR three, the ball field lights. So that, that three hundred and twenty-five thousand is actually two CIPs combined, because they're both Canaveral City.
Okay. So the, the non-lights portion is how much?
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five could potentially be reduced down to what this year?
Um, I had, I broke it down on the actual CIP page, and I hope I'm using the same one that you guys are looking off of, which is page one twenty-five.
Yep.
Playground equipment, I kept the original budget of two hundred and fifty thousand for that. Now that I know what I know, I don't think we can get, I don't think we can replace what we have with the, the level of quality for that amount. So that one should probably go back to the think tank, but the Sandpiper fencing, we budgeted fifteen thousand for that, we could probably go get some quotes and get lower than that original seventeen thousand because we've had fences installed since then, and the bidder that did that initial fence, that partial fence at Sandpiper, came in high compared to everybody else when we went to do the one for the splash pad, so.
Fifteen is comfortable?
Fifteen, I think, is comfortable.
And cameras?
Cameras are gonna, depending upon how, we, we have a good system, we have plenty of power access, we already have one camera in the general vicinity, we can probably keep that under ten.
That number could come down to twenty-five for this year, except for the lights, twenty-five plus lights.
And the, there's an opportunity with the lights, obviously, it would have to go before the Little League board, but the Little League president and a couple other of their, well, their board is changing because they just had their votes, but they have talked about, you know, partnering with the city to get the lights improved, because not only are those lights a pretty large expense, given the type of lights they are, but they're also really inefficient. So when we go to do the retrofit on that, it will reduce our overall costs, but it sounds like Little League is as interested in getting new lighting and adequate lighting as, as we are.
And, and if I could just interject there, so Molly, this playground, it's, and, and I'm familiar with this, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to council, this, the reason this playground is even showing up in twenty-three, twenty-four is because this playground's been pushed out for a few years because the number of projects that we had, the money wasn't there to, to do this playground, and even staff, you know, staff had recommended, well, you know, that we keep pushing this out because we couldn't afford it. So now, this two hundred and fifty thousand seems like, yeah, it could be pushed out. I think what, we need to let council know, though, is that when we re-approach this, whether it be in twenty-four, twenty-five, or twenty-five, twenty-six, with the cost of what playgrounds are, to, to, to know that potentially it could cost. to, to, to know that potentially it could cost three hundred, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. But, and with that being said, it sounds like the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar playground, which you were just speaking of, is not a priority for this year.
I personally wouldn't call it a priority, and then beyond that, extending it would give us more time to apply for other grants.
Right.
Such as the, the FERDAP grant, because with, with playground equipment, the, the FERDAP grants I'm always very cautious of, because that's, that's the grant that tells us that, you know, we can't charge this to one person and this to another person. So when we're looking at, say, a pavilion structure, I might not be as eager to go after a FERDAP grant for something I intend to use as a revenue source. But for playground equipment, the FERDAP grant makes sense. And it's usually a matching grant, um, the one for Patriots Park, and obviously it's different every year, and depending upon what the governor signs, what the governor decides not to sign, you know, that's affected by that. Because these grants are, FERDAP is part of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. It's their little recreation side funding business, and it's, it's a great program, but you just have to be selective in what you use it for. And they are all about paving surfaces and accessibility surfaces and playground equipment. And if we focus our energy on trying to get those grants, like, the maximum I think that they offer is two hundred and fifty thousand, but that means that we would have to cough up our percentage, whatever it'd be that year, of fifty or twenty-five percent. So what's going on at Patriots right now, my budget is a hundred thousand, the grant is seventy-five thousand, and we're putting in twenty-five thousand. Now, some of that twenty-five thousand is actually not so much hard money in the bank, it's staff time. So those, those kind of grants and those kind of opportunities could really help with this. And I fully understand, if it's not falling down and people aren't getting hurt on it, and we're able to maintain and purchase parts for it, I wouldn't consider it a priority.
And maybe by pushing it out a year or two years, the, maybe what we feel like we may actually need over there, uh, what might be two hundred, what might be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars two years from now, but maybe what we could scale it down, and the concept will be that, what does two hundred and fifty thousand dollars get us for the improvement in the park, and is it sufficient for, for that park? So maybe we, we don't have to go like this, we can just go like this.
I think we're all getting to the same point.
Right.
What was the, um, lighting figure again, Jenny?
Fifty thousand for the ball field.
So ball field to fifty thousand, twenty-five for fence and cameras, that's, that, this reduces this to seventy-five thousand. And, and you feel comfortable with that? And then we would make it a, our point to pursue grant funding for the next fiscal year? Okay.
I, I would even be comfortable pushing the, the playground equipment out two fiscal years.
Okay.
Okay.
To twenty-five, twenty-six.
But for now, going down from, what are we at, three twenty-five, is that the right one?
To seventy-five.
Well, two, CR one would go from two seventy-five to twenty-five.
I'm on page fifty-seven.
Okay, but, right, so that would go down to fifty, yeah, seventy-five thousand.
That would go down from?
Three twenty-five.
Three twenty-five to seventy thousand.
Right.
And just to, but just to confirm, that does not have anything to do with the mileage rate?
It's the CRA.
Right, I'm just confirming, I'm just making sure.
It's just CRA savings.
Okay.
This is all CRA.
Right.
So it'll reduce three hundred and twenty-five thousand, the lighting is?
Down to seventy-five.
Down to seventy-five.
So the lighting in?
And playground equipment.
And we're still getting quotes on, on lighting stuff, because these were numbers that were created by Gustavo. And obviously, we know that just about everything in the entire world's gone up like twenty-five to thirty percent, so.
So we keep CR three at fifty thousand?
I would keep it there for now.
Right, and then CR one would go down to twenty-five?
Yeah, it's just taking out playground equipment.
Okay.
Right, which is the most expensive part of that entire project, unless something crazy happens with lights.
And what kinda lights are these? I'm just confused on where they're gonna go, 'cause is the Little League?
Yep.
These are the stadium lights for the Little League.
Okay.
Right now, we have about half of them working, and even at half capacity, the monthly bill for, like, a, a regular season is like six hundred dollars. And that's with the, that's with only like half of them working. So not only do we have an issue with uneven lighting, but it's highly inefficient, and the bulbs are ridiculously expensive.
Mm-hmm, how old are those lights? Been there as long as I've been here?
They have been here as long as I've been here too.
Yeah.
I did, I was able to confirm with the help of June and her team, because the more I learn, the more, more intelligent questions I start to ask. And, and when we started kinda poking around, looking at what new, you know, ball field lighting actually costs, the first thing the guy said was, how old is your panel? And I'm like, oh my god, I don't even wanna go there. But luckily, it's, it's a newer panel, and, um, right now, we would just need to make sure that it could handle whatever capacity. But at least we aren't looking at a full electrical upgrade for the park, because.
Oh, the main service panel, yeah, that is?
Yeah, yeah, that's, it takes quite a bit to.
Five, six thousand dollars, something, four hundred amps or whatever it would need.
Right, yeah, 'cause you need that to be appropriate to run the lights.
It was upgraded about ten years ago.
Yes.
So the lights, um, at Canaveral Park there, it's a darker park, is there gonna be lighting in the fencing? It won't go?
That was part, um, that was listed in the CIP with, with ten thousand dollars. We can do some minor things this year, like we've done with like the motion sensor stuff. It's not the best, but it is lighting, and we can work, lighting is one of the things that FERDAP will, will cover. So when we go to do a full-on lighting, like, plan for that park, so that it's as lit as it needs to be when it needs to be, that could be something that we loop into the infrastructure portion of the, the park grant. So there's options for it, we have some, you know, more affordable, less, uh, commercial-grade solutions that we could employ in the meantime.
But was this lighting, I'm sorry to say on this, it, to also improve Canaveral City Park, where the spider web is?
The fifty thousand dollars is just the Little League field, right?
Fifty thousand is just the Little League, there was lighting, um.
Ten thousand on the page on the screen here, I'm looking straight at.
Page one twenty-five.
That's just for?
That was just for Sandpiper.
The, the little?
Yeah, Sandpiper Park.
So we can push that?
We can push that. Yeah, we've already had to install some.
Yeah.
So we're, so we're pushing the ten thousand also, and just keeping fifteen thousand then?
Yeah, we're only staying with the fence and cameras.
Which is fifteen thousand or twenty-five?
Uh, that's, um, twenty-five thousand, and then fifty thousand for the Little League lights.
Where are fence and cameras? I'm looking at the screen.
Page, page one twenty-five, I don't know if.
Yep, okay, so we have?
She's, she said she'd like to do fencing and cameras for twenty-five, push out the lighting in the playground, so.
Mm-hmm, okay, I'm there. Where are cameras? I don't.
They're, it's not on there, she just mentioned it when she came up.
It's not written on there, it's in the.
But where is, it, it's under elect, or, um, under lighting it would fall under?
It could.
And how many cameras?
I haven't decided yet, it just depends on how much the cost is.
What kinda cameras?
The kind that would jive with our system, that's already at the C five, or I can pull it up on my app.
Would, where would they go, though?
Um, it depends on the best possible vantage points. I would always want to cover at least the entry points to the park and the pavilion. 'Cause right now, there's, there's no coverage in that area.
We find that's the best deterrent, Mayor, to vandalism. These kids know they're being watched, makes a difference.
And, and we've tried to do the temporary, um, cameras, and, uh, they were vandalized.
I don't like cameras in parks, I think it takes away from the peace of a park. There's nothing, you know, when you're sitting there at Banana, Manatee Park, those lights are on you, and you're out trying to enjoy a sunset, and I look around, and I understand the vandalism, and we've spent time on this, but I would shy away from buying cameras. But most importantly, if we're gonna buy cameras, we should tell people that they're being recorded.
Yeah, there's already.
I find that to be very, uh, startling when you see a camera that's not well-marked and displayed. And so if we're gonna do cameras, I do ask that. I don't like them all together, I'd be fine with cameras, obviously, where there's secure information, but I don't know if it's a big cost savings. But for me, it's just more about, put the cameras, um, sure, around the certain facilities, but what are they gonna take? And I'm not, I know we had vandalism, but I'd rather be scrubbing and helping clean up together as a community some vandalism as a volunteer project, than to always know that cameras are on our residents here in parks. So, I didn't know cameras were involved in this, but since it was brought up, I do wanna address that. And, um, that's me, my opinion on it. Obviously, it's not something that I think this council's voted on or decided about, the purchase of cameras. You have a responsibility to make sure that the properties are secure. I don't have a concern for vandalism today, maybe I need to learn a little bit more about it. I have spoke to Gustavo, and I do know about the problems in the past, but, um, for me, that would be, um.
It also catches crime. It's an, it's a deterrent for crime.
I know all the upside, but I just don't wanna live in a city where cameras are, are faced at our residents in parks.
I understand.
There's a place in a park, like you're talking about entrances, or there's, you know, valuable assets. Um, and again, this is me, I'd love to hear the council, but for me, if it's not substantial cost savings, we probably shouldn't spend any more time on it. I didn't want it to get us off track, but I'm excited about our parks, I do wanna see this park improved. I'm not saying if we take two hundred and fifty thousand and delay it, I'm saying, maybe we can make twenty thousand dollars worth of improvements. And I understand the grant game too, but if we can do what we discussed, that would be good. The lights over there in that corner park at, uh, uh, Sandpiper and Canaveral City is low at night, and we've talked about. And I'm just trying to figure out how we don't have to spend ten thousand dollars to improve the lights. Not talking about Little League.
And then ten thousand is a projection, 'cause sometimes what we've found is that it's labor, and when we're trying to put things into already established facilities, now we're, we're working around tree roots, so that we're not damaging trees, we're working around existing infrastructure underground. So it might not even reach ten thousand. But we have to, we have to throw out numbers, and all of the things that are presented in this CIP came directly to me from residents that live basically across the street. And, and see.
I've got a question for Molly.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry.
Those improvements I do wanna see, but I, I'm, I didn't hear, if we're talking about the same folks. Yeah, the lights, it's a forecast, it's your best. When you dig in, if we can see some, some reasonable lighting improvements, putting a couple in there, um, or electrical outlets, if that's the eight thousand dollars we need to do, I'd rather spend that, so that we can have those capabilities. But, yeah.
I just, um, we talked about the lighting at Veterans Park, and you were saying the, what's it called, the?
Festoon lighting?
Yes, would that work in the park, and how would, how much would that be? Would that be more than?
Similar to what we did in, um, Zero Escape?
That was, that, those aren't commercial grade.
Right.
That was just a test.
Are you happy with that test?
I, I, I'm happy with it so far, I, it hasn't been up for a full year, that park is also directly in front of these fine people. Um, so, uh, I, I don't have as many concerns. I mean, I can, I still have the footage of the kids ripping the Christmas lights off the trees.
Right.
And I'm aware of that.
I don't know that I would, I mean, festoon lighting is beautiful, but I don't know if that's.
It's not bright enough for out there, is it?
It, it's not that it's not bright enough, I just don't believe that it won't get vandalized. And that's a little bit easier target than something that's like a, a pole mounted onto the ground, or onto the side of the fence, or something like that. They, they can't just cut that down.
Okay, thank you.
So for this item, are we comfortable with, um, just reducing it from three twenty-five down to seventy-five, and then calling that a, a win for the CRA budget this year?
I think that was an idea we heard that got some, I mean, thank you, that's awesome.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was taking note of the two other items, since Molly's standing at the podium. Molly, the mayor, mentioned the dividers, the C five dividers for twenty-two K, obviously, that's probably something that's, you know, an, an improvement, uh, you know, for people to divide things, for people have usage and what have you. It's a nicety, um, is, uh, the mayor had questioned that, is, is the twenty-two K something that could be considered to be pushed out a year? Or would you recommend, based on its, uh, benefit, that, you know, it stay?
What page are you on, John?
Page thirty-one.
Page forty-one.
P R C A ten.
Yeah, and page forty-one's in the budget, but yeah, P R C A, so.
The, the purpose of the gym dividers is, is mostly creature comforts for our, our people that use the gym. We've managed without them, um, obviously, we still have a lot of conflicts when it comes to gym use, and, and players, and your ball roll over on my side, and, um, I, I don't like the sport you're playing, it's too loud. And, you know, there's, you know, when you're sharing a space with somebody, like cubicles, there's, there's always going to be issues, but, I mean, it's.
This item is in the general fund.
If it was, if it's something that is not considered a, a, a critical need, I don't have a problem with pushing it out. But I'm gonna throw anything that, that the community brings to me, whether it be a council member, or the city manager, or, you know, a resident. If somebody brings an idea to me, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna look at the prices, and I'm gonna throw it out there. If you guys wanna cut it, if you guys don't feel that it's a priority, I'm okay with that. Because then, then that decision comes from above my head, so it's like, you know, I'm ready when they are, but I, I totally understand, in my own budgetary life, that there's a difference between needs and wants. So it would be nice to have curtains dividing the pickleball courts, but.
Oh, you said pickleball?
Yes.
Oh.
Let's, let's not go there.
That kinda ball.
Yes.
Uh, the last item the mayor brought up for your department was the vehicle, and we've talked about that, and I have first-hand knowledge. Mayor, that's a two thousand fourteen vehicle, and, um, it's, it's, it's a need. Public, the rec department needs this new vehicle.
I, I would, I will speak to the issues that we had this year, in addition to the normal surprises of, you know, pricing going up and eggs and everything. At some point, the decision was made to, to hold on to one of our vehicles before I came into the picture. And, um, I ended up sinking over two thousand dollars in repairs to the vehicle, because it had literally outlasted its lifespan, and the Nissan Frontier is, is almost there, so.
Molly, instead of the.
You have an out here.
P R C A twelve, that has the scoreboard, aren't we, are we doing that this year?
Scoreboard has already arrived.
Okay, so what if we wait for the trash receptacles, or push that out? The new trash receptacles, that was part of your piece, P R C A twelve was a scoreboard and receptacles? If we push that out, that's thirty-two thousand, and keep your vehicle, is that a?
I'll, I'll, I'll trade a car for a trash can.
I'm just throwing, I'm, I'm throwing that out there.
Wait, are these the trash cans around the, which park?
One of my goals is to improve the aesthetics and the reliability of our trash service in our parks. And one of the best ways I have researched to combat that is to get away from the rolling bins that tend to roll away, and tend to get forgotten. So, um, not only do they, they look a little tacky, especially when you get large numbers of them together. Um, they're great for events, it's very convenient for, for making the loop around the park to pick up trash, but I don't personally think it's an attractive sight when you walk into a park, and there's giant trash receptacles. site when you walk into a park and there's giant trash receptacles when you go to any other city, um, big or small, and the trash receptacles match the park, match the infrastructure, and nobody rolls them somewhere else and they get forgotten, and then we get bombarded with complaints that trash isn't being emptied and Waste Pro's not doing their job.
So, there would be permanent structures placed diversely across to meet people where they are more?
Right.
Opposed to having them, and then just operationally, just...
Yeah.
You could roll the big green one and, okay.
And clean them all out.
I think that would be...
And it would look a lot...
Okay, so leave, leave five thousand trash?
I, I, these are the issues, as she said, that I've heard in that park. So, when she says she's putting them on the agenda, I think we've all known that...
Okay, well, but the scoreboard, at least, that's another five thousand. So, if we take out her court dividers and her five thousand dollar scoreboard, that's twenty-seven, but keep the vehicle that's needed.
Are we good on taking out the court dividers?
Yeah, I haven't had complaints.
Okay.
Push it out.
I'm fine.
Push it out. Eventually, that would be nice, and if you've ever been in a gymnasium and does have dividers like that, it, it does help, you know, to, to be able to do two different, like, classes or programs without interfering with one another. So, it's, it's a nice to have, but it's not easy to have.
Okay. But the scoreboard is why I was, when did the scoreboard, why is that one getting brought up?
We...
Because is this for Little League?
We were originally planning to get a new scoreboard.
Yeah.
The, the one that we have, they wanted over four thousand dollars just for the maintenance package on an old scoreboard, and we were able to find a new scoreboard for a little over four thousand. And with the money that we were able to save from the other, um, Little League retrofit CIP, which I don't even think is in this one.
So, basically, it's getting done this fiscal year?
And the scoreboard's here. The scoreboard's gonna happen.
Right, so we can pull that out of P R C A twelve.
Thank you, I got it.
Okay, so, just to, I'm keeping my notes here.
Instead of always having to submit these things like six months in advance?
Okay, so, leave the vehicle in, possibly, uh, the dividers, push out, and leave the five thousand dollar trash bins in P R C A twelve. Those are the notes I have. I don't know if there's consensus on that.
Sounds good.
Yep, okay, well, I'm gonna pause there, and I know it's getting late nine. Um, I got a few more things I could wrap up, but I wanna make sure council has anything to say, and take just a quick, maybe three-minute break, five-minute if we need more, and come back and...
Come back and finish up.
I'll summarize just my, a few things, and we can transition, segue out.
I would just like to ask...
Thank y'all very much for patiently working on this.
Mayor, I would just like to ask, and I know you're gonna let us do this, when we, we get done here, hopefully shortly, um, we'll recap everything that you expressed. I think, city manager, do we need a consensus on, with these three council people, will do a consensus?
Do a recap and a quick consensus.
Because we will not be able to get this budget complete unless, if we know that there's a consensus for Jenny to adjust these items tonight that we did, so when we come in on September sixth, we give you a good product. Otherwise, it's gonna be chaos, so we need to...
And there's no confusion, yeah.
Okay?
That sounds great, and we can do five? Is that good?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You got me out of here by nine.
We do? Let's do it, well...
Three minutes.
I, I, if no one else is leaving, I'll be swift. Here's my phone if it goes off.
Okay.
Ms. Molly? I got a question for you.
Why?
Well, I can just bring it back, if we can leave it up, if we're...
No, I just have, uh, because, um, just a question. I don't know, but this, um, Recreation Expansion Fund, the S P I A, is that something we can look at for, um, the city park too?
Um, it, when it comes to those expansion, I was... Or to the one that we have with the library. Replacing a playground with a playground, expanding...
Oh, gotcha.
Building a new park, or putting a new feature of a park, we would serve new customers.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
So, 'cause that's when, um, I had an update, and John explained that to me. When helpers come in and build things, they sometimes have libraries, parks.
Oh, right. Oh, that's what, oh, okay.
I was going to that.
Gotcha.
I can't just tap it.
Right.
Tap it.
Yeah, I was talking to John about it earlier, yeah, okay, gotcha.
That particular project, the most people I've seen in that park are...
Oh, my gosh.
I think I would notice that.
Yeah, really.
But developing that park and making that park, are the park...
Oh, okay. Oh, cool, okay, good, thank you.
All right, we ready to go?
Yep.
Okay, thank you all. Call the meeting back to order, six fifty, or eight fifty-eight P M., sorry about that. Uh, and we are, uh, I was wrapping up kinda some of the things, and so, yes, thank y'all for, um, that was sort of a, a good example of, you know, the prioritizing. Thank you, Molly, for helping us understand, you know, how, how it could be possible, and, uh, from, from your, your view, and then financially, thank y'all for making it work. Um, and that, that approach is encouraging to me, because how I think you do get to that fifteen percent or ten percent cut that council member Calum you had brought up, is by doing that and saying, what are the bottom two that we could say next year, we'll tackle this, um, to try and get this budget down, to support, yes, a lower millage rate. And I am more inclined to see little improvements across a lot of projects, and maybe picking out a few important ones, 'cause unavoidable, the veterans parks of the world, those are big ones that we've been wanting to do, and, um, that way, we're, we're given the T L C needed, but I think in the next, by, by twenty thirty, we'll see a very different Cape Canaveral and improved, and be, be on a good track. But that, that is, um, that is all for the, the Parks and Rec and, and on the CRA side. I, I think the non-governmental area is a little too big. I understand that this is, um, stated to be things that benefit the entire community, but when I'm reading the budget, some of those, if we can shrink the non-governmental, or as I think it's...
I'm sorry, do you mean non-departmental?
Thank you very...
Oh, okay, I was just wondering, we're on the same page.
Was I saying non-governmental?
Mm-hmm, I think we're all governmental.
I thought we had a new department.
Thank you, sorry, non-departmental, and then it's called, um, something else in another summary, but, um, on, where is it, the agenda summary?
Forty-five?
I, I hope so. Yep, it's at forty-five is where we actually see the entire breakdown from non-departmental. And so, inside here, just a million dollars into the operating, the two hundred, six thousand for equipment maintenance, city network. Can we just talk about that, is in a, uh, am I on the right one? Yep. Wha- what is that? The...
Well, it has about...
Or two hundred twenty-five thousand?
Yep, it has about twenty-five lines. Ninety-six thousand is repair, maintenance, upgrades of the city computers, a hundred computers.
Mm-hmm, and then the, uh, insurance covers what, the property insurance?
Yes, and that went up twen-, was that twenty percent, Todd?
Twenty-five percent, and something else went up forty percent.
For all property owned by the city? Or just a particular building?
Uh, no, I believe the, the overall property thing went up like twenty-five percent.
So, we pay three hundred eighty-three thousand dollars a year to insure all of our real property?
Um, this was, um, it's, the property insurance, uh, three hundred and forty-seven, eight hundred, our liquor liability insurance, twenty-three hundred for our Friday Fest, and flood insurance, thirty-three thousand. That makes up the three hundred eighty-three, three hundred eighty-three thousand. But yes, I, I wanna say the insurance went up twenty-five percent, the property is what, Molly, yeah.
Wha- what are, like, promotional activities at forty thousand and nine thousand under...
Okay, twelve thousand of the promotional activities is the promotional videos. We move that into non-departmental, because it really affects, you know, it benefits all of the departments. There's just a, a lot, um...
Got it, no, and, and I'm not expecting, you know...
The, the employee appreciation lunch, uh, half of that is in there.
Is this strategic?
The birthday gift cards, those are all in the promotional activities.
Where is the strategic planning return?
And that's also...
Strategic planning.
Okay.
Um, no, the strategic planning is not under that, sorry. It's under, uh, contract services. Another thing, big thing in promotional activities is the volunteer appreciation dinner for seventy-five hundred.
Hmm, okay.
Okay, so we're transferring one point four million out of, uh, non-departmental to...
Yes.
Uh, wastewater. The revenue fu-, uh, from, in non-departmental comes out of the general fund, Advalormen.
Right, the, the transfer to wastewater and stormwater is ARPA funds that will come in as cash forward and go out, transferring to wastewater and stormwater.
But why is it in non-departmental? Couldn't it just stay in the administrative? Or the main?
No, because non-departmental is, non-departmental represents, is captured, that's not specific to the other departments, so that means that, that's where you collect, that's where you bring your cash forward in to move to other, to, to move to the, like, say, the enterprise funds, because non-departmental is, is other funds that come out of the bank account that go, um, in, into, let's just say, non-departmental, and then is transferred over to support things like, the one point four million is the clarifiers. The, um, the other thing for stormwater are the other two, um, ARPA-funded, uh, stormwater projects. And that's why they're there, because they don't have a place, that's, wouldn't be a proper place to put, uh, put them. Non-departmental is, is just that. It doesn't have to do with any of the, um, it has to do with every, all the departments as opposed to just, you know, administrative or recreation, what have you.
Okay, I, I guess my thing was to say, there's a lot of money in non-departmental. Total non-departmental is five point four million. I understand the transfers, that actually makes sense, but if it could stay in the fund they came in, but even if we kept the transfers, when I look at some of this stuff, when you're looking at a budget and five and a half million of the, you know, is non-departmental, that's, well, what's in there? And so, if we can shrink that...
Well, also, if you look at, well, and also, if you look, really, four million dollars is either transfers, the ARPA, how we have to transfer it out, and also the TIF money for CRA, which has to be transferred out of there too. So, really, if you add those two numbers up, you're almost at four million dollars.
So, they're, those are, okay...
Those are just being transferred.
In operating, so agreed on the capital out.
Right. And, yeah, the capital, the only thing this year is the computer servers, which we pushed out from last year.
And you upgrade to Microsoft eleven, every computer has to be upgraded, so that's, that is labor time for our I T person. This is an expensive year for computers, but we only do it like this once every six years, seven years. This is the year though.
So, just, the, our, like, A one A replenishment, twenty-four thousand, that could go in infrastructure maintenance. That's, because that, to me, is more representative. R and R replenishment, same, a hundred twenty-four thousand. To me, this just seems like it's bigger.
Yep.
Even the operating at one point three million.
But then R and R replenishment for the general fund covers all the, all the general fund departments?
All the departments.
I'd rather divide it by five departments, but, um, that's okay, we can move on. Is there anything, so, so knowing that, okay, we, we can, we can stop there, and, and, thank y'all. Mine, um, my hope is that we, we can go in and, and pull some stuff out. I think that the big projects that we need to, to delay and look at, when you're talking about the stormwater, water is very important, um, I just wanna follow the plan, and if we're gonna approach the Civic Cub, um, as, in all the underlay, as a stormwater project of any sort, you know, it'd be good to start, uh, get some calculations so that we can know what the impact would be.
Absolutely.
Got that? So, yeah, I, I, the hundred fifty thousand demolition, I, I don't think that's necessary this year. So, yeah, I, I, the 150,000 demolition, I, I don't think that's necessary this year. Um, I think we've figured out how to shrink the lights.
The, the 150,000, though, that doesn't really help if you cut that. You're just cutting out 150 cash forward that's coming in from the loan.
Oh, that's the ARPA one?
It's the loan left over.
No, that's the loan.
For the, for the Civic Hub, the 150,000, that's being pulled in from the loan, so if you...
Cash forward from the remaining proceeds.
Right. So that doesn't really cut...
And then it's moved to the CRA.
I mean, if we don't do it, we wouldn't pull the cash forward through, from the loan.
And the reality is, if there's nothing to demolish, we're not spending...
Right. But, yeah, so if we don't use it, we won't pull any cash forward through, so...
Well, I thought that, um, obviously the building's demolished, so there's 150,000 still in there for...
Selective demolition of other things, perhaps we don't, might decide we want to get a jump on it and maybe if the, uh, the shuffleboard courts need to come up, you know, that, that cost is gonna be taken care of to prep it for the following year, when we actually do some capital improvements out there.
I think the Civic Hub got too big. That's all, it's now, it's stretched too far. I agree with Councilmember Kellum. If we're gonna do this, I do think we need to, because it's, it just, it, it's a, going underneath makes sense whenever we do it, but for me, if we can just stick to that, when I hear Civic Hub, I think about the half-acre parcel. And if it's the greater plan to do this project and say, we can move it over at shuffleboard courts, well, now we're leaving the Civic Hub that I originally thought we were gonna fund. And that's where we're moving money around. And if that's loan money, I, we spent a lot of time talking about, well, do we have to spend that money on that if we choose not to? And so I think keeping those funds there would be best. And what I'm saying is the 150, that parking lot is fine today. Um, it is providing value for people who want to park. I would hold the 150,000 and go right down the line with that same approach. Um, I would reduce little league fields and, you know, if we got grants, that's good stuff. I like that, especially some of the funds with the investment tax credit and things, uh, on those energy projects or resiliency projects. But I am, I think I flipped through all the pages and addressed the major issues. The, the bike lane striping at 50,000, I think a lot of this is high because of inflation. Then that means we should do less. And I know we've said that everything council's brought, that's not 100%. I, I, I don't think you, I want to clarify that there are things in here we heard and it, it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing. These are things from the community that I'm just putting on to see the council. I appreciate that. But there are opportunities in this budget to cut, there really are. And for staff to tell me that there's not one thing, I, that's very discouraging. I think we have to say, there, there may not be one thing we want to cut, but for me to come in line item by line item and have to grind this down and, you know, to talk about taking away a $7,000 event that would involve and invite the whole city for, you know, a board appreciation, those are the types of things we should be doing. We should be spending money on, because those are low-cost, high-value. Molly and I talked about the, um, the Christmas light thing, uh, event that was sort of like a throw-it-together. It was such a huge hit, low-cost, high-value, because we kind of ha- meet people where they are by taking advantage of our locations. I'm for doing more recreation events and things, but to come into this budget and define a million dollars, I think is, we can do that. And I hope that, that we, we don't look at it as, there's projects that, well, we know the issues. Flooding has to be addressed. A1A has to be addressed and the safety of that. Um, and outside of that, I think we've got to press, that's all I gotta say. I know, uh, I don't want to waste any time, but I really appreciate, uh, just working through this, taking our time, not feeling the pressure of another meeting coming forward after us. And thank you all, everyone who's been involved. I know the budget's not fun at times, but I am excited about the projects I'm seeing. So, uh, we can summarize some of the things for you, John and council. If you have anything to say, let me know.
I was just gonna add, Mayor, that when we talk about a budget and there's nothing here to cut, in the proper context, that's saying that these are the things that were told to us that either council or staff had put in because projects had been delayed or, for a couple of years and now, you know, like the playground or whatever. So if those things are chosen not to be, be done because they're not critical to the functioning of the city, whatever, I agree, but, but when we, when, I just want to make it clear for the record that when, when we say that there's nothing in here to be cut, we're saying in the sense that we have honored all of what council has requested of us through the strategic retreat, whatever. When you visit and come back then and decide there's things you don't want, well, then that's, that's a whole different, that's a whole different matter. That, that's all I want to state, because there's always a couple of dollars or this or that you can cut, but you're taking away niceties. A good example, real quick, is like the dividers. Molly put those dividers in there because she knows her, her, her patrons are coming in there and about, you know, privacy and not this, this being separated and what have you. So she puts it out here, right? It's something that is a, a benefit to that C5, but could it be delayed? Yes, it could be. That's all I got.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
And the percentage of funds of grant-funded of our budget is large. That's another thing that I tried to express in the last meeting. So paired up with just taking a few projects one at a time, putting that effort, recognizing we've got a huge tranche of grant funds, unprecedented in Cape Canaveral, from my knowledge. And we had the most rewarding ad floor on tax valuation we've ever seen. And then we're still raising taxes by almost, or 9, 10%, 15% more revenues. I think we can do a great job for, with, with less money and still improve the services and quality of lives, so... I wanted to remind the grant thing too, is a big driver in this.
And when I say core services are included in this, what I'm saying is those amenities that this city is used to having, done in a quality way, with things being upgraded as appropriate, thing, community needs being addressed in this budget like we do every year. And when I say core services, I'm, I'm including that in it. So that could include court dividers, for example. The basic things that we say we want to have.
And also, I mean, a lot of our, our funds are grants, but I just quickly added up because I, um, I have the items that were associated with grants. We have a million dollars in expenses to get those grants.
Okay, that's done.
So that's, that's a, you know, a way to look at it too, so...
If it's, uh, if it's okay, Mayor, um, I'd ask for Jenny or John to just recap all the things we decided. And then I want to just ask if we all have consensus on all those things and then, before we call it a night.
Okay. So these are all, all things that would be changed in the budget, coming back to you. Um, you'll have it on the 29th, did we say, 29th, by the 29th. Um, remove the City Hall build-out, which was IM13, $90,000.
Instead, we're taking over the mayor's office.
Right. Keep Santa.
We, we have to decide which one we're gonna give up.
Yeah, um, remove...
Is there a consensus on that, taking away?
We're just gonna do the whole list and we'll get consensus on all.
Remove the strategic planning line item in the general fund for 6750 and from the enterprise of 6750. Waiting on Veterans Park for the engineering.
Whatever savings are realized from Veterans Park VE, assuming it gets done timely.
Yes.
Yes.
That will be removed. Um, remove the resilience vehicle of 26,000, RD1, push that out a year. Push out the dividers, PRCA 10, the gym dividers of 22,000, push that out a year. PRCA 12, take out the $5,000 scoreboard and leave the $5,000 trash, permanent trash receptacles. CRA, um, CR1, push out the playground two years to 25, 26, um, for 250,000. Okay, that's all, that's all I have.
That's all of them?
I think that, I think that's everything.
Unless the council can remember something that she didn't capture, I thought that was a pretty good list.
Yeah, and if there's anything between now and the meeting that comes up, we can relay that in and talk about it when we can actually take action as a council, so, thank you all.
So it's, it's important that if we get consensus on it, that I see all three actually, because we're, we're speaking for a five-member council, two of which aren't here. And I just know if, if these three hold the line on whatever we say tonight at that time, we don't have to double back and do things.
Understood, yep.
Okay, we have consensus. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Council, any other statements?
No, I just appreciate your indulgence and all of the work you did and answering the questions. It's, it's us to, up to us to make the decision. I appreciate you answering the questions.
Well, we appreciate that and Jenny and I, you know, we put our whole heart into this and, uh, we're here to support you. And of course, you know, if there's things council sees that needs to be cut and they vote for that and there's a consensus, then, then we cut it. And that's how we move forward.
Thank you.
Just another couple sixty-hour weeks for Jenny, that's all.
Councilmember Kellum, you good?
I'm good.
Any reports? City clerk, thank y'all. Any reports, good?
Nice job, John and Jenny, thank you.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thanks.
Meeting adjourned.